Ms. Butts. Ms. Lynda Davis.
Here.
Dr. Patricia Jaeger.
Here.
Mr. Tim Dennison.
Here.
Dr. Monby Anderson. Dr. Lakeisha Gant.
Here.
Ms. Nicole Hall.
Here.
And Mr. Mark Evans.
Here. All right, seeing that we have quorum, we'll move next to the Board President's report. Dr. Anderson sent a, an email and asked me to read this as her report. So she wants to remind us that next month we will be going into executive session to discuss superintendent's evaluation tool. It'd be great if Dr. Hooker could share with us before next month's meeting to give members an opportunity to review and discuss individually before coming together for the session with our collective thoughts. Mr. Griner has scheduled the HB 581, right? It's 581? HB 581 hearings for Tuesday, January the fourteenth, the twenty-first, and the twenty-eighth. And a quorum must be present, so please block those dates off, Board members, on your calendars. I'd like to recommend, Dr. Anderson would like to recommend, that we set our spring retreat for March the fourteenth or, and fifteenth. If that doesn't work, then maybe we could do it the following week, the twenty-first or twenty-second. So just look at your calendars and if you're free that weekend, make sure that you block it off and let us know which one works best for you. We're going to structure it like we did our October retreat, except that our Friday will be more of a dinner and meeting, and we'll do our professional development on Saturday. You know, so that way on Friday, we can just kind of bond as a board as we're going to be welcoming a new member in, in January. If you have any ideas for the training of the retreat, if you would let myself or Dr. Anderson know, you know, we would, we would really like to hear your thoughts on that. Dr. Anderson's initial thoughts are to have a superintendent evaluation training to get our newest member caught up. We'll also review our Board's Code of Ethics, and we'd also like to engage the Cabinet on some specific aspects of our strategic plan, and we'll ask all your thoughts on what you'd like to hear most. So, you know, starting today, we're going to be doing our new policy development and review process, not with what, what we have on the agenda for tonight, but from, from here on out, we are going to be doing the, if remember, we have a first read, then an official review the following month, and then it's sent out for public comment only. After all revisions have been approved by the Board, we will no longer send out policies for review while we wait for revisions or responses from the district. It is not an efficient way to operate and creates confusion in our community about which versions of policies actually get passed. On a happier note, I would like to remind the Board that our holiday party with the Cabinet is going to be this Tuesday from six to eight PM. Not only are we going to be celebrating the holidays together, but we'll also be celebrating Ms. Butts' service on the Board as well, and so we hope that, that you can attend. Dr. Anderson is wishing us all a wonderful holiday season from GSBA. She has, she shared a document with us on a presentation that she found particularly insightful, given the district's priority to overhaul our literacy curricula, and she would hope that you would have a look at it and maybe we could have a conversation about that. And then Dr. Anderson says all the best. So that is the President's report for, for, for our work session.
Mr. President, just one correction about the change in the policies that will be taking place in February.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that part.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. Did you guys catch that? So, yeah, we're going to be actually, so tonight, these are policies that we've already looked at rather extensively, so, but from, from here on out, we're going to have the initial read, and then the month review, and then it's going to come back, and then when we send it out for the public, the, the language will be in place, so that way we don't have five, six versions of the same policy floating out there. So we're trying to, trying to streamline a little bit better. Okay? Yes, Dr. Jaeger?
I'm sorry, you said some, you rattled off some dates at the very beginning about superintendent review. Could you repeat those dates?
Let me put my earphones in, because that might help, because I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
No, it's my fault.
Before you started talking about the retreat, there were some dates that you mentioned really quickly, and I didn't have my pen ready.
Okay, so, so we have the HB 581 meetings, January the fourteenth, the twenty-first, and the twenty-eighth.
Thank you.
At six PM, right? At six? At six PM. All right. And then the retreat, the proposal from Dr. Anderson for the retreats is March fourteenth and fifteenth, to look at your calendar, and if that doesn't work, then maybe we could meet a week later, which is the twenty-first and twenty-second. And, you know, so if, if we have majority of people who can do the twenty-first and twenty-second, not the fourteenth and fifteenth, then we'll, we'll switch it up then. But if you would take a look at your calendar and let Dr. Anderson know what works best for you, within the next couple of weeks, that'd be great. Are we all good with that? Okay, all right. All right, so we're going to move on to policy. Now, these are policies that we have talked about and that have been out for public review and been back and forth and back and forth. So the question I have is, I was thinking that we could, we could treat some of these as, you know, consent agenda items, and so I would thought we would do like what we do with the business items, you know, I would just say, all right, policy one A, and if you want to keep, if we want to put in consent agenda, then thumbs up if you want to talk about it, then we can pull it out. Okay? Does that work for everybody? All right, thank you. All right, so the first one, policy IA, instructional program philosophy, consent, or do we want to pull it out? Okay? Okay, all right, we'll put it in consent. Excellent, thank you. Policy KC, Board Community Relations.
I'd like to have a discussion on that one.
Okay, all right, we can have a discussion. Okay, all right. Policy GBT, professional publishing, consent, or do we want to, we want to have a discussion?
If we could pull that from consent.
Okay. All right. Policy IHF, graduation requirements, debate, or do we want to just put it in consent?
I, I don't know if we need to put it, we can probably put it in consent. I just, when I read that policy, I don't think I picked up on exactly, exactly what the requirements are. I think it just sent us to another thing, and I think I liked that part. Never mind, I didn't make any notes on that one, so I'll just, I'll, I'll let that one go.
Okay, so do you want me to pull it, Ms. Davis?
No, because I need to go back and figure out why I didn't think it had, that I understood what it was saying.
Okay, so we'll put that on consent. Okay, great. All right, policy GCI, Classified Personnel Evaluation. Want to pull that, Dr. Gant?
Yes, but I think I have, it's more, yes, and I think we may be able to get the question answered. When I was reading through this, I could not tell if, if it meant that there would, I didn't see any changes necessarily that, that indicated, like, any type of formal process for appeal for our classified staff, and I just wanted to be sure I was understanding that correctly. I didn't see it in the notes, and just from reading through, I'm looking at the highlighted green areas, it didn't appear that there is an opportunity for our classified staff to have, like, a conversation or...
Mr. Schwartz, will you make comments to Dr. Gant's question, please?
Yes, at the end of our evaluation for classified staff, there is an opportunity to respond in writing, which would then lead to conversations that could be had in regards to that individual's perspective on the policy. However, the, our Board Policy GAE, Complaints and Grievances, as well as Georgia Code, does state that you cannot file a grievance against your summative evaluations, so...
Okay, and with our certified staff, am I confusing policies with our certified staff? There is a process by which they can appeal. Is that correct?
Based off of these policies, not the summative, but there is a process that they can appeal the mid-years, so this applies both for certified and classified.
Okay.
Question?
Ms. Davis?
So, I have a quick question. So, this, the, the law supersedes this policy, obviously, right? So if there's a complaint or something of that nature that would be a violation of law, then this policy does not apply. Right? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I thought I understood that, and maybe we should put the references here about that.
So, Dr. Gant, do you still want to pull it, or? Okay. All right, moving on to policy GBRIG, Federal Family and Medical Leave Action.
Mr. President, we did not get if Dr. Gant wanted to pull it or not.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought, okay. All right, then moving on to policy GBRIG, Federal Family and Medical Leave Action. Do we want to put that in consent, or do we want to pull it?
I just have a question, and then we can decide if we need to pull it, but the quick question is, this seems to be very specific in terms of who gets these complaints in the policy, so it feels kind of like that's more of a, what do we call it? The, it's more the operations side of it, and so it takes it down to a level of specificity when it is telling us a person within the organization to whom the complaints need to be made, right? Or who has that responsibility? And I'm wondering, just across the Board, are we now getting so specific that we're into the org chart as to who handles these complaints, or is this just an HR issue? And maybe it should be at the HR Director level that we speak in terms of policy, to avoid getting into the operations, things that we're trying so hard desperately to avoid? Does that make sense? I can rephrase it.
Yeah, no, it makes sense.
Yeah. I think it was previously referred to the HR Director, which is reasonable, and now it's taken it down to a Human Resources Leave Specialist. I don't know where that title came from, I don't know anything about that, but it's, because it's too deep into your department, from my perspective, and so I'm just wondering if we should try and keep these policies at our governance level and maybe address the policy at the administrative level. Does that make sense? Because if I'm looking at the org chart, I don't know that I...
It's an org chart, they're crossing out, there is no sort of, the, that role no longer exists, and so the person who handles this is the leave specialist who works with the district for that. So it's just a, it's just about the name change.
So, again, my question is, does the leave specialist report to the HR Director? Or do they report to another person up at the administrative level?
Yes, it goes, it would, that person would report and follow the chain up to the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
And so I'm trying to look for a, I guess, a line in the sand where the Board's policies should probably stop at the Director level when we're trying to create a policy for the district as opposed to getting into specific people within a department to do something. Does that make sense?
Are you trying to say that you want it broader?
Yeah, because we only talked to Dr. Hooker.
Yeah, we don't, we don't need names and serial numbers?
Yeah, we don't, I don't think we need these, these lower levels, because that means you got to change your policy every time you have an organizational restructure and a change of that nature. So that's all I'm trying to do, is avoid having to revisit this, because the policy doesn't change. Who handles it might change, but that's truly not the Board, that is truly operations.
And you're, you're correct, Ms. Davis, and we'll be glad to make that change.
Thank you so much.
Before the next meeting, thank you so much for bringing that to our attention.
So, with that, are, are you good? So we can, if they change the...
Some wording change, I'm happy with it to go with that wording change.
That we will put that on the consent agenda. All right. All right. Future policies for review from the Board? I, I don't think we have anything, right, till February, correct?
I'm sorry.
Oh, it says future policies for review from the Board, so...
Yes, any policies that the Board had in mind that they liked to review, that's what...
Okay.
So this is where we tell you about it, and then we get it scheduled at some future date?
Yeah.
KG?
Thank you. KG?
Yes. That series.
And I can't remember, I'm sorry, Dr. Evans?
Oh, okay, yes, ma'am.
I can't remember if the leave policy, when will that come back before us? I just can't remember the name of it. I know it's not this one that we're looking at, but the one that, I think it was two, it was here two months ago, and then...
Right, GBR, GBRH, we will have that back to the Board in, am I, January?
January, okay.
Yes, we had to clean up some stuff. And can I interject here and say, am I correct in saying that we need to discuss these policies now and not during the Board meeting to go ahead and have discussions about the policies that you wanted to pull?
Yeah.
Yes, to have that discussion now instead of at the Board meeting? Okay. If we can go back up to KC was the first one that was pulled.
That is correct, KC.
All right. Ms. Davis, you had questions?
Oh, yes, this one sounded strange to me, and so again, forgive my time on the Board, but in the twelve years I've been here, we've avoided this at all costs, I didn't even know it made it into policy. But we, do I read this correctly, and that a, a Board, a community Board, right, not, that doesn't have a relationship with the district, can ask for a meeting with a full Board?
You're talking about KC?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, KC, right? So this is what this policy is giving us permission to do now?
This was already in place. In fact, we used it maybe two or three years ago when the Board met with the NAACP. They use this policy specifically to request or to refer to.
Wow, okay, I missed that entirely, and so I guess there's a process that I, that I would need to do a follow-up on, and so that was my question, is this is new to me, because I don't, that would have to be a public meeting, right?
Yes, it was, yeah, and most of us attended, and we had pretty significant discussion, I think, at the ti, over a couple of meetings, I think.
Well, this is a good one, thank you so much. That was my only question, is like, contrary to what I thought we were doing. Okay.
So if, if you're okay with that?
I'm fine, that can stay exactly where it is.
Okay, then we'll move that, does anyone else want to have a conversation about this in the regular meeting? Okay. All right, then we'll put it in the consent agenda, that will work. Thank you. All right, next one is policy GBT, professional publishing, and Dr. Gant, you're the one who pulled that, so, ma'am?
Yes, and I don't, I don't know how much discussion, you know, the Board wants to have, but I'll just reiterate some of the concerns I had initially with wanting this to align with, excuse me, the expectations that we have for the person in the role of superintendency. And so when we have our teachers and paraprofessionals or school counselors or whoever that may be engaged in the creation of any type of work that they do for Clark County, I think it would be great if either some of the same rights or processes, if they could parallel each other. And so if we, referring to a part of, like, the expectation of the role in superintendency, copyright or whatever is created by a person who's serving in the role of superintendent is actually theirs, and the district does not have to, as it mentions here, it, it does not have to, it doesn't automatically belong to the district. And so, to me, it would seem that we would want to position our colleagues as well, you know, to do work and do work that belongs to them and doesn't belong to the district, or if we want to have a process, that that process would be for our district staff as well as the person serving in the role of superintendency. So I'm just saying, I would like to see some consistency with this particular policy, and then what we expect, you know, from the person in the role of, of superintendent, although I know that changes and it's based on, like, their contract and what the district agrees to, but at any rate, that's my own, that would be my objection here, and so that just adds context to why I would probably, I would not support this at this time.
Anyone else?
Can I just recap to make sure I understand exactly what I'm hearing? There's a, we can contractually with the superintendent waive their obligation to surrender anything that they create while doing the work of the district, so that they can have private rights to that as opposed to it being the intellectual property of the district, but that does not apply to all of our other employees.
That, that's exactly what I'm saying, and I don't know that it should or should, I don't know, like, the legal parameters, but I'm saying, if they, if we do have some legal parameters where we can do that, then yeah, there should be some consistency there. I don't know if that's a policy thing or, or conversation as it relates to contract agreements and things like that, as, in the future, but, yeah.
From my understanding, Dr. Hooker, maybe you can shed some light on this, that's kind of a standard thing in contracts with superintendents, right, that, you know, you, you would keep your intellectual property rights, whereas, like, if, if I was a middle school social studies teacher and I created a really cool curriculum, but I was doing it on the school time, it would be considered schoolwork. Is, is that, is that fair?
Yes, that's the standard wording in a superintendent's contract, and the example that you gave of the middle school is in line. And Mr. Pruitt, am I correct in what I'm saying? I know I'm correct, but I need for you to verify concerning, it's a standard wording in a superintendent's contract about the intellectual property, but for his teachers having the right to have intellectual, that is not prevalent across other districts or United States. I've never heard of it.
I don't, I don't know. I don't know about other contracts across the United States. I was actually trying to remember when, when that sentence got put in the superintendent's contract and who was superintendent then, and honestly, I don't remember. I think it's been there a while.
Ms. Davis says she does.
I, I do remember, but, and again, it was, in that scenario, as I recall, that superintendent had been working on this as a part of their doctoral thesis or something, and then they didn't finish it before they became our employee, and the agreement was that they would finish that work, if I'm not mistaken, and that's, that's how I recall it even being an issue or a thing that we talked about. That was one incident that I can recall, and, and the agreement was that that person could do that, but then, of course, when the community found out later, there was a lot of noise about that person doing that, but again, that was taken care of ahead of time.
Yeah, and, and I'm not an intellectual property expert, but I don't think, you know, the general law is, is, is the terms work for hire, you know, and the employer owns the work for hire, but that's if it's in the scope of your employment, so I don't think the, your employer would own your, your doctoral dissertation anyway, because it's not in the scope of your employment, but, yeah.
So then the question that I would have is, I'm not sure why, why we're, why we have this policy, because, and I worked for thirty-eight years on a Fortune fifty company, and so they're all about the profit, and nobody had a waiver for intellectual property. If you were on the payroll, what you created there belonged to the corporation, because they created the environment for it, the work that you were doing, you were paid for hire, that was it, so, yeah, even in an R and D company that I worked for that was employee-owned, what you created using their, their knowledge and the work that you were doing for them belonged to the company, so...
Dr. Gant?
And I think, and so I don't know, I don't know if the policy, the policy may serve a purpose, and I know different institutions do it differently, at mine, there is graduated based on how many resources you're using.
Right.
You know, and then that determines, like, whose it is, and particularly if there's funding or profit.
Sure.
The, the resources, other than time, but like, other resources that you may be using, and like I said, I won't, I don't want to belabor the point, I've just wanted to give some context for my concern, and it may, may not be something we can fix with policy, but I certainly think, you know, should this be standard practice across the state of Georgia or the United States? I do think, you know, this could be an opportunity to, I don't know, you know, I think of our teachers and counselors, they are doing some, I mean, many of our colleagues are doing really innovative things, and I do think it's important for them, in addition to our students, but for them to also be able to, not necessarily just profit monetarily, but it, to be able to help them as well, as opposed to saying, well, if we give you permission.
Right.
Because that could depend on a whole lot of things, whether the district grants permission for a person to create. So I don't know if the policy needs more work, I don't know if it's just, like, more discussion in the future, it, it's not necessarily applicable as it relates to contract, anything like that, that's already determined, but I just want to reiterate for the record, I think there should be some consistency between what we have for the seat, the Director and our other, our professional colleagues.
Ms. Hall?
So I want to make sure I'm understanding correctly, so I...
So I want to make sure I'm understanding correctly, so I can give it the, the support that I want to. We're saying that if a middle school teacher in Clark County develops a curriculum for our children that fills in some type of deficit that we've had, we would be allowed to take that intellectual property, profit off of it, and put that back into our budget to benefit our children. Correct? But the, Dr. Gant, I want to make sure I understand. Your, your concern is making sure that the policies are paralleled. So if we're giving that opportunity, if we're making that requirement for the middle school teacher, you're saying it should be across the board or it should be graduated?
Well, I'm, I'm sort of, so yes, I'm saying that it should be fair. In other words, like there's some discre, I'm saying two things. It should be fair and there needs to be a process by which that is determined. It just says here unless ownership is transferred by the district to the employee in writing. Well, what's the process for that? So I'm saying that there, this needs to be fleshed out a little bit more. I would love to hear from teachers, profession, you know, like counselors, things like that. And I'm also saying in the future, we may want to, if this is, you know, sort of talked about more and built out, we may want to keep that in mind for future conversations as we, if we ever, you know, have to move forward and be in a place where we're, you know, hiring another superintendent as well. Because right now it's just whatever they create is theirs, which may be fine. It may be great. So neither has a process. But what I'm saying is one of them is like, oh yeah, it's yours. And then the other one is like, depends on if we say so. But there's no, it just says, there, there's no way to know what that process and decision-making, what goes into that.
So just quick, because I'm processing that. And so are, with the process piece being missing, and my question, I don't know if this would be for Dr. Hooker or Mr. Pruitt or amongst our colleagues, but would that process piece be a regulation? And so would we have to approve the policy prior to the district generating the process through a regulation? Is, is that what, is that the course that we're supposed to be doing? Thank you for the clarity. I needed clarity.
Dr. Jaeger?
I think that was going to be my suggestion is that what we're talking about is a regulation and let the district come up with a process by which a teacher could apply to maintain some of their copyright of anything they produce. That should be a process in a regulation. At least that's what we've done in the past. And that's the district's priority, not the board.
And so.
Yes, Ms. Davis?
My, my, to piggyback on that, I think it's great to, we definitely need the policy. Then we do need the regulation. And then I would like to know how is this expressed in our partnerships with the University of Georgia and other institutions that are doing research in our schools with our children? And I can't see or we don't know what is happening with what they are learning. Are they creating products that, you know, truly could offset our costs? You know, if it becomes something that becomes marketable? So yeah, I'd love for us to address this so that we can have guidance on it from the board for sure. But then the regulations, that would definitely reach into contractual agreements that we make with other institutions that use our community and our children for gain.
Dr. Jaeger?
I would just say generally if it's a, I think Dr. Gant is focused on our own employees and the, the rights or opportunities available to our employees. University of Georgia will have a very large amount to say about intellectual property and any grant work that they do with us. That's very different can of worms.
But it's one that I, again, it needs to be transparent and, and it, and yeah, I totally agree with that. And that therefore I think it's very critical that if we have an opportunity to fill income gaps based on someone patented, patenting or copyrighting stuff, then we, we need to have those conversations. It's a new day, new time.
I'm going to let Dr. Gant end, end this discussion. Dr. Gant?
Yes, so I, yeah, those were my thoughts. I would love to see what, you know, I don't know if we have, I don't know if we have this information readily available and I could place it in the questions document. But how many people have we, you know, how many occasions have we had, you know, where a person has wanted to hang on to the, you know, the things that they've, the material they've created? And then like what is the current process? In other words, even if there's not a regulation, what's the general, you know, what, what the general practice is? But those are things I can place there and I, I don't really have any additional concerns to add.
Okay, I'd like to move on if that's okay. All right.
Can I say one quick comment? Just haven't spoken yet.
Mr. Denson?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I, I do appreciate Dr. Gant bringing this up. And I understand that there's, this might be the common practice especially, but it's also a pretty common practice, especially in the South and in Georgia, for us to have laws and policies in place that disempower workers in the workplace. And I, I, I do kind of, kind of see the problematic here thing. So I probably won't be here for the voting meeting to be able to vote on this as I'm going to my daughter's holiday thing, but I, I also kind of would, I'm not supporting this change. Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to Policy GCI, the Classified Personnel Evaluation. Dr. Gant, I think you, you pulled that one?
Yes, and I, I think maybe I'm still struggling to understand the difference between this evaluation and the one that was mentioned and the opportunity for our classified staff to be able to appeal, to have a formal process of appeal. And I.
I think that's GBIA?
Okay, and so that would be in a, you said GBIA? Okay. And so that would be standard across all of our employees? Teachers, okay. And so that's my concern here that we have our certified colleagues who have a process. And again, trying to somewhat provide some bit of like equity between people that have different amounts of power. But I would love to see a process for our classified personnel. And I don't see that here. And so I am open to the idea that I may be misinterpreting some things, but I don't see it here. And I think that's consistent with what I said earlier. And so that's why I would not, that's context for my future vote.
Ms. Davis?
I'm sorry.
Mrs. Swartz?
Yeah, so as I read from OCGA 20 dash 2 dash 9, 8, 9, dash 7, which I copied in there, except, it says, except for provided in paragraph two of the subsection, the performance ratings contained in personality evaluations conductant pursuant to this code section 20 dash 2, dash 210, professional development plans and job performance shall not be subject to complaint under the provisions.
That's certified, not classified?
It applies to, so.
That's why GBIA is the model policy that the SBA put out to implement that you all.
Mr. Pruitt, would you mind turning on your microphone so we can hear what you're saying, please? I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm just trying to make sure we have accurate information here. Go ahead, Dan.
I mean, we, we would then have to change board policy, GAE complaints and grievances that state that performance rating contains in personality evaluations, job performance and professional development plans. So as at-will employees, they're not subject to the same sort of provisions that certified staff have. And so there's, there's processes in place for certified staff, but for classified staff, there aren't. So we can, I can look further into the law and see if we want to do that. But if we want to do that, then we need, also need to look at Policy GAE. Complaints and grievances.
Anyone else have any thoughts or questions? Mr. Denson?
I guess I just, it seemed like Attorney Pruitt had some concerns that there might be some confusion in this. I guess I would like to hear what that is, just to ensure that this is all.
Well, I think it's stated accurately this time. That does not, that statute and Policy GBIA apply to certified teachers, not to classified personnel. That's what I was trying to make clear.
And Mr. Pruitt, which, which code would apply to classified then if that one is incorrect, sir?
There's no statute that requires appeals for classified personnel. And there wasn't one to, that required appeals for certified personnel until 2021. And that's when that policy was put in place. That's why you'll see the last sentence says effective July 1, 2021.
And so if I'm understanding correctly, there is not a requirement by the law to have a process for classified staff. But that does not mean that we cannot have a process for classified staff.
And so now I can speak if you'll call on me. So yes.
Ms. Davis?
Now, now that's where I am is I believe that we sign off on the personnel list every time, whether they're classified or not. And so for our employees not to have an appeal process that can at least reach somebody beyond their immediate supervision, yeah, I think that there's a gap here. And so I think there definitely needs to be a measure where employees can appeal an evaluation to the board. And I have, I have copies of another board's, their little cards that they give out when, when, when the community or employees have a question. And the board is always the last resort for people that the board has fiduciary responsibility to the community in terms of how we spend funds. And so I would think that there would at least be an appeal process that would ultimately escalate to the board if necessary.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, Mr. Pruitt, as well as what the board members have stated, they would have the same appeal process that a certified person would have. A classified, if we were to put those, I'm asking because as Ms. Davis stated, that they would have an opportunity to appeal to the board. So wouldn't that be the same as a certified person who wants to appeal their evaluation or?
I, I don't know how to answer except to say again, the law doesn't require classified personnel to have any appeal process. If you want to give them an appeal process, it could be identical to the one for certified or it could be anything else that the district wants to do.
Right. They could appeal to the human resource, their assistant superintendent or someone within that department.
It could, and that's, you know, by the way, that's the appeal process for termination of classified personnel.
Okay, that's what I was referring to.
To the HR, to the assistant superintendent for HR.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on this? Mr. Denson?
I guess, yeah, I would, seeing that there is no formal written way for there to be an appeal process for classified. I guess I, I would be interested in us drafting this policy to have an identical one to the certified appeal process and that put into this policy. That's what I would support.
Ms. Davis?
So while I think it would be great, I think we'll be, we'll differ because of the certified employees and the governing body for them in terms of them maintaining their certification. There are certain things that happen to them that won't happen to a non-certified, to a classified employee. So yeah, we would have a divergence at some point. But I think in terms of making sure that everybody that walks in, gets a paycheck from CCSD is going to be treated equitably is, is the most important thing.
Thank you. All right, so I feel good about that. So, so those are the ones that we will bring up for votes, the ones that we talked about. Okay, all right. So now I'd like to move on to number five, business items for discussion for consent agenda. And we'll do it like we do, thumbs up, thumbs down. So November 14th work session in board meeting minutes, consent. Okay, thank you. Personnel?
Consent?
Consent. Oh, Dr. Gant?
Consent, but I have a quick question for the board and, and Dr. Hooker. With our personnel, would it be, if there's a majority of the board that's in agreement, would it, would it be too much for, you see where we have our vacated personnel? Like, let's see, vacated certified, vacated classified. Is there any way for us to be able to have a column or fill that last column in? Well, to have an additional column on the number of years they've been with the, the district? Or is that sort of going into some personal information that probably shouldn't be known by board members?
We can add that if you'd like, like to see that.
Again, I'm trying to gather what you said. Are you asking that the person that's vacating the position have a column that says the years of experience that they've had in Clark County or just total number of years of experience?
Maybe in Clark County because we have, you know, like we sort of have like a, a profile with all of the people that we're appointing. Oftentimes that includes that. Like, you know, it'll say they're a veteran or they've been doing this for this amount of time. And I think it can help particularly, although we are not involved in the decision-making or operations, it can give an idea particularly, we already get the, the reason that they are leaving, but it can give us just a little bit more, just information, particularly for the departments that we see consist, like some, it may seem like a lot of turnover, but I think it can just give us information if someone's been here 20, you know, if there are six meetings that were over a year and we see that somebody is leaving. And I'm just giving this as an example. This is not, but we see many people that have been here more than 15 years who are leaving the nutrition department, just for, for, as an example. I think it just sort of helps us keep our finger on the pulse a little bit more of who's leaving. But if that's too much, like I said, it's not a hill I'm gonna, but I just want to know what other colleagues think. And if it's too much for the district, I'm okay just, just asking if I, you know, if I have a question.
We can add it if you and the board would, would like. What comes to my mind is perhaps we pull exit survey data. It has a lot of that information. And so maybe instead of seeing it month in, month out, maybe we can put that in a board update as far as a year-end of this, these are what we see as far as the experience of people leaving CCSD. And that will, can help you see from not just a month-to-month basis, but also a yearly basis how we go. So either way, but that, that could be another option if you want to see, see that type of information.
Is that a consensus of the board that they would like to see this information?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, let's move forward.
All right, moving on to job descriptions.
And, and Paul?
Paul, okay, all right. Ms. Davis, is there anything in particular?
It's, you know, as I look at the different classifications, the pre-residency, residency, I don't think I have a full picture of where we're going with this. I know that this is an initiative, right? And for whatever reason, it's just not, and I probably didn't look hard enough. Maybe there's a presentation about this whole residency-based teacher apprenticeship. Is residency-based simply means that they're already our employees or what does that mean? I'm not sure.
All right, and you're, you're correct, Ms. Davis. I believe we did this, a presentation on this back in September. We highlighted this in the newsletter that was sent out last week, or week before, the four individuals who received these. These are paraprofessionals within our district when we talked about the university that those students could get their degree in a three-year period. This was discussed in detail at, at least at two of our meetings. But Mr. Swartz, I'll allow you to give any other further comments if I missed anything.
Yes, so that this, the special education residency-based teacher apprenticeship was approved. And now we're moving into sort of the finer details at this point in time. And so we have been able to identify those individuals and they will begin their residency. And we want to have a sort of. And we want to have a sort of specific job description for them. That helps with the registered apprenticeship to show the progression of movement as well as track those individuals. And they just have now, they are officially a resident. And so that will happen in January, but we want to get these job descriptions to you to be evaluated and approved.
Yeah. It was vaguely familiar. And again, it's something I'm interested in tracking because there are different tiers involved here. And the work seems to be pretty much the same in all of them. And so, yeah, I'm anxious to see how this works. And so I'd love to hear updates on this periodically. I don't know if anybody else does.
Absolutely.
I'm very interested in how this is going to work.
Yeah.
Mr. Schwartz, I've had many conversations about this.
So are there salary tiers within this structure?
We've aligned it with our classified paraprofessional interventionist type of tier. So they will be able to continue in that type of model and then have yearly steps.
Okay. Thank you.
So do we need to still pull it, Ms. Davis, or?
Yes. I think it's a big, it's a change. I think it's a significant change and I think it's something that our community would appreciate. And I know that the parents would really like to know. So some things that are, have some big impacts. I think we want to kind of keep those separate so we can keep up with them better.
Okay. All right. Then we will keep it pulled. All right. Moving on to Georgia power costs for CMS Electrical Services, Clark Middle School. Keep, okay. All right. E, district services warehouse expansion. Okay. Ms. Davis, do you have something?
I already talked to John.
Okay. I just saw your microphone was on, that's why I.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. That's how I'm seeing, you know, if I see your microphone on, they want to talk. Okay. All right. Next one, F, Clark Middle School solar panels. Do we want to pull that or do we want it to be on the consent agenda? I'm okay with the consent agenda.
I'm okay with consent agenda. I don't know if you're, I'm the only one, but I've been getting lots of emails of lots of enthusiasm about these panels. So we're very grateful for the district for finding a way to do this for these students.
Can I, oh, Ms. Davis?
I did the COC meeting and this was a big discussion there. And so I'm real excited about this and people, I think this is one of those wins for the district. Looking forward to it. And I too have been getting a lot of emails about this one.
Yeah. Also, happy to have this consent. And I really just want to shout out to, I think this was a student-led thing that was advocated from the students, especially at Clark Middle, and just want to really appreciate them and recognize them because I don't think this would have happened without them doing it.
So by pulling it off consent, does that mean that it gets a little bit more attention when we do the vote in the next meeting?
No.
No? Okay. I just want to make sure that we tell everybody about this wonderful win. Thank you.
All right. Well, before we move on from this, again, I would really like to thank the students, especially a lot of students that I got that are at Clark Central High School now. They're at Central, who emailed and said, even though I'm not a student at CMS anymore, I think this is a wonderful first step. And I thought that was really great and kind of a tribute to our civics teachers who are, you know, really doing some good work and pushing our kids into being more engaged on the local level. So I wanted to send a shout out to all of those at Clark Central High School and also at Cedar Shoals. Yes, ma'am. Last one, Ms. Gant.
Yes. And related to this, I do think this is exciting and very happy about the direction. I would love to see, I would love to be voting on efforts such as this across all of our schools on the east side as well. And so I'm hopeful that the small steps that we're taking, that our students across other schools and colleagues at other schools will feel empowered and know that the board, you know, supports these efforts. And I would love to see any small steps that we could take towards these efforts that are led by our students and led by our colleagues and then our community.
Thank you, Dr. Gant. All right. So we will make sure that we put the solar panels on the consent agenda. So there, there we go. Great. All right. Board meetings, G, board meetings 2025 calendar. I hope that you all have taken a look at this. Consent? Or do we want to pull it and talk about it? Okay. All right. All right. Field trips? Consent? Okay. Excellent.
I like the format. Thank you for putting them all together there.
Isn't that nice?
Yeah.
I liked it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Paul. All right. I, early head start slash head start application to carryover funds from the 2023-2024 budget period to the 2024-2025 budget period. We all good with that? Anybody here want to talk about it? Okay. All right. All right. And then item J, second IGA intergovernmental agreement between CCSD and ACC GOV to provide for expenditure of ARPA funds in support of youth development and violence prevention initiatives. Do we want to pull that or do we want to talk about it? I mean, do we want to consent agenda or do we want to talk about it? Dr. Gant?
I would like to pull it.
Okay. All right. Okay. All right. All right. Well, I don't think we have anything to talk about in executive session, do we? We do not? Excellent. Okay. So since we don't have that, can I, I'll just adjourn the work session. Right? Okay.
Do you, do you want us to talk about the?
Oh, I am so sorry. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry.
No, no, no. That's okay.
I'm sorry. I forgot. I forgot to ask. All right. Dr. Gant, and you'd like to pull it, you want to start us off with a discussion, please, for the second IGA? I'm sorry.
Yes. So I was, I read through it and I've been, I was trying to put the pieces together. And so, yes, I support, definitely support the partnership. I guess I'm trying to figure out where does, I know Dr. Hooker sent out an email about our partnership with, is it CY? I'm blanking on the.
CYDO.
CYDO. Okay. Thank you. And I'm trying to figure out where does that fit? So I've read through this agreement and then I read through the email with regards to what would need to happen. And how are these related?
These, these two are totally different partnerships. If, if I'm not mistaken, the partnership is between UGA, the Athens-Clark County Government and Clark County School District. So this is a totally different partnership than with CYDO.
Okay.
Because if you look in this, if I'm not mistaken, CYD, not, excuse me, the county has put in $110,000 for the past two years. The third year would be $165,000. UGA has put in $50,000 as well as using students to help in this endeavor. CYDO is a totally different entity in which we are dealing with.
And so I'm wondering, I'm sorry, I'm looking at different things from the email to, but would it, if this is a part of, from my recollection, this is a part of the partnership where the first year, the district put in 100-plus thousand.
We matched whatever, yes, we matched whatever the county. This is the last usage of their ARPA funds.
Okay.
Yes.
And so I'm wondering when, might there be a possibility to have that rolled in here? Like the CYDO efforts? Because all of it falls under youth development. And so I guess I'm, in trying to go back to your email of what, you know, what, that communication. And then here, I don't see any other way for us to be able to support those efforts without having it rolled into an already formalized partnership unless we are talking about, like in your email.
Which, can you tell me which email are you referring to?
Yes. Give me one second. So you, in the email, whoops. Okay. Sorry. I moved. It moved. I'm sorry. Give me, give me one second. I think I replied back to you on it, but. Gosh, I can't find it. It was an email that you copied the board on just maybe earlier this week or at the end of last week about. Yes. The one on the ninth, on Monday, December 9th. Let's see if I can.
Let me pull that up as well.
And so for some, some reason, I started combining these in my head that they were. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Evans?
Mr. Denson?
Just with my understanding, like with these being like the Community Youth Development Organization program, that definitely falls outside of the, of this agreement. And what I would assume was could not be combined in this agreement without having to have this go completely back before ACC GOV mayor commission again if we're trying to. And I would see the best way for us to be able to have both of those programs move forward would be to have, I believe, the proper procedure would be to amend the agenda for the voting meeting and to add, potentially waiving the fees, which is part of board policy KG, regulations KGR1. But that would need to be done, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Hooker, Mr. Pruitt, but that would need to be done separately outside of this agenda item.
I'll let Mr. Pruitt answer that and then I'll come in.
Okay. Yeah. That's right. And actually, at the beginning of the, of the regular meeting at seven, whoever makes the motion to approve the agenda, instead of having to go through that amendment process, you could just say move to add an item to consider waiver of reimbursement for CYDO. And with that amend, with that change, move to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarity. I was putting three different, three different messages together. The only thing else, only other thing I'll say is that I think in the future, should we ever have this opportunity to collaborate with ACC GOV and then community partners, I really want us to think about how we have these partners at the table. In my mind, they're, just my mind now, which is a strange place. But the, I don't, these should, this agreement, it would have been great had people been at the table as a district is, you know, putting together their initiatives and any other community initiatives that we have going on. To me, that was an opportunity for both bodies to collaborate, not just with each other, but other initiatives in our community. And oftentimes, these groups don't feel like they have really sort of a true partnership with Clark County. And I'm not saying that that's the case for CYDO. I don't even mean to speak for them. I'm just saying we were here maybe a year ago when we were looking at the policies that were related to this about a track team. And so to me, it would be advantageous for the district to look at, how do we partner with our youth-serving organizations in a more collaborative way? Because I would love to be voting on something more comprehensive versus us having to go and amend the agenda for one. And then if something else comes up in the future, we got to amend the agenda again. So that's all.
Ms. Davis, you had your light on. Did you want to speak?
I do want to speak to that. And that's an excellent segue into the question of, you know, how do we do business with youth-serving organizations in the community? Some of them are very well-prepared. They're part of national organizations. And so we've had longstanding agreements with some youth-serving organizations. But for new organizations coming on board, the road is definitely not that clear. And so with the CYDO, and full disclosure, I have been working with this organization since its inception, when it was born, out of a community meeting three years ago under Dr. Thomas's leadership when she was our superintendent. And so I have been the note taker for them and I have that history in my head. So I definitely will not speak on their behalf. But I will say that this was a process and it is a process and we're in a trial. And so the relevance to the YDI initiative is the sixth grade basketball league was given to CYDO to run in its inaugural year. And so I would be anxious to hear how YDI viewed that performance in relationship to where we are now because I believe that that league was now, the CYDO was told that that league, that that was going to be combined with the seventh and eighth graders. And that didn't happen. And so I'm curious to know where we are with our sixth grade league that we started that year too. So those are the things that concern me as a community member, but also as a board member. So there was flexibility in terms of how YDI ran the first year and it seems to be different this year. And so it's a matter of getting everybody on the same page, everybody at the table, I believe.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Anyone else? Okay. All right. Well, seeing how, so we will be voting on C, job descriptions? And J? Okay?
Yes. Separate vote.
Okay. All right. Seeing how we do not need to go into executive session, I will move us into adjournment. And so we will adjourn till seven o'clock when we have our regular meeting. See you all then.
All right. Great.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have it seven o'clock and so I would like to call the business meeting of the Clark County School District to order please. Superintendent Hooker, would you please do the roll call?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, Ms. Heidi Hensley, Ms. Claudia Butts.
Here.
Ms. Linda Davis.
Here.
Dr. Patricia Jaeger.
Here.
Mr. Tim Denson, Dr. Mombi Anderson, Dr. Lakeisha Gant.
Here.
Mr. Ms. Nicole Hall.
Here.
And Mr. Mark Evans.
Here.
And for the record, Dr. Anderson is here on the phone.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to have our moment of silent meditation and then the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please rise and come to the stage and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, Dr. Hooker, could we do awards and recognitions, please?
Yes, we will ask Dr. Moore to come to the podium and recognize our awardees for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Hooker, Mr. Evans, good evening, board members. We have a few recognitions tonight, so we'll get started with our December Employee of the Month. Our Employee of the Month for December is Samantha Iveyes, first grade teacher at Fowler Drive Elementary. Ms. Iveyes, if you'll come to the stage? Ms. Iveyes is in her fourth year with Fowler Drive and CCSD and is deeply involved in many aspects of her school community. In addition to her regular teaching duties, she is a coach for the school's Girls on the Run running program for students in grades three through five. She also works with the school's ASP after-school program and has served on Hispanic Heritage and Black History Committees. She is also known for always having beautiful displays for the hallway that her children help her create, and we witnessed that firsthand when we visited her earlier this week. Ms. Iveyes was nominated by one of her first grade colleagues, Macy Cross, who said she has always gone above and beyond for her students, constantly thinking of ways to engage them in creative activities that challenge and excite them. She writes that it is not unusual to pass Ms. Iveyes's classroom and see students intently engaged in the fun activities she has planned for the day. She truly goes above and beyond to support her students and devotes much of her time, energy, and efforts to the Fowler community. Fowler Drive Principal Pam Garcia agrees that Ms. Iveyes is more than deserving of the Employee of the Month of the Month award due to her unwavering commitment to her students, colleagues, and the school community as a whole. Ms. Garcia writes that Ms. Iveyes sets high expectations for her students while fostering open communication with parents, creating a collaborative and supportive learning environment. Her loving demeanor, strong content knowledge, and willingness to help anyone, whether it's a student or a colleague, demonstrate her dedication to excellence in education. Her tireless efforts to create a dynamic, engaging, and nurturing classroom make learning exciting for her students. She consistently develops creative themes that celebrate student growth and creates a positive atmosphere. Ms. Iveyes's dedication to making a difference in the lives of those around her truly make her an outstanding candidate for Employee of the Month. Please join me in congratulating Samantha Iveyes. At this time, I'd like to ask the board to come up and we'll have a picture if you don't mind. And while they are making their way, we want to thank again the Athens Area Chamber of Commerce for their continued partnership in our Employee of the Month program and for supplying the Employee of the Month gift bag each month. You're going to have a really fun time going through that tonight. It contains numerous gifts for local businesses. And as a reminder, we want to encourage everyone in our community to nominate any full-time CCSD employee with at least one year of experience for this award. You can follow the link on the screen there. If you will all, yes. There we go. Move up a little bit there. Okay, smile. Thank you, thank you, and again, congratulations and thank you for the work you do. Thank you so much. Next tonight, we'd like to recognize the five exceptional eighth grade students who make up this year's Reach Scholarship cohort for CCSD. Reach Georgia is a needs-based mentoring and scholarship program providing students with framework of educational and financial support to aid their successful journey through high school and beyond. These five students were selected by our district Reach Committee through a multi-level process that included an extensive application, school-based semifinalist selection, and a panel interview with Reach Committee members and district staff. As part of the program commitments, scholars must maintain at least a 2.5 grade point average, exhibit good behavior, and maintain attendance throughout middle school and high school to remain part of the program. Throughout their time in the program, the students will be assigned an academic coach who will ensure they remain on track to succeed by monitoring their academic progress, helping them develop education and career plans, and identifying academic and social supports. Each of the five Reach Scholars for this year recently participated in individual signing ceremonies at their schools with their families present earlier this month, signifying the students' commitment to successfully complete the program and their family's commitment to support them in their educational journeys. Upon program completion at the end of high school, students will be awarded a $10,000 scholarship which can be used at any hope-eligible institution in Georgia. A majority of Georgia colleges and universities match or double-match the scholarship, meaning that students can earn up to $30,000 in Reach Scholarship money when they graduate from high school. We are joined tonight by the scholars and their families. So at this time, I'd like to ask Veronica Johnson, the district's Reach Coordinator, and Dr. Hooker to make their way to the center stage to help us recognize these young people. As I call each student's name, I'd like for you to come up, accept your award for Ms. Johnson, and remain on the stage because we'll have the board come forward one more time for pictures with them. First up, Natalia Calderon Salazar from Coil Middle School. Natalia, please come on up. If you turn around, we'll take your picture. And then I'll ask you just to move over here and stay, stay right there until we get everybody up. Next, Kimberly Twiggerus of Coil Middle School. Kimberly, come on up. Now, I will tell you, as Kimberly's making her way up, that both Natalia and Kimberly tied for the top score on the district Reach application, so congratulations to you ladies. Right there. Wonderful. Stand over there. Next up, Inza Kamagate, Bernie Harris Lions Middle School. Okay, now, Ms. Johnson, if you'll go to the end and then you all move all together, we'll ask our board members to make your way up one more time. You guys slide down towards Dr. Hooker just a little bit. And at this time, I'd like to invite any principals or teachers that you brought with you up, as well as any family members who would like to come. And while they're making their way up, I think you all will agree that the selection committee did a great job. You all are very impressive and we're very proud of you. Okay, you all come on out and we'll squeeze in together there. I think as you look around, it's apparent, or should be, that it takes all of us to support these young people. So I think a picture with our board and our administrators and our students and their families is particularly important and meaningful as we look back on this day when you all graduate from college and come back and tell us about your experience, okay? Scoot on up. Dr. Gant, we can't see you. There you go. Bending down is not going to help you be seen, not be seen.
All right, everybody looking at her on three.
One, two, three.
Perfect. You got Dr. Jaeger. All right, thank you all, and again, congratulations. Take your time. Next tonight, we'd like to recognize four CCSD staff members who are on track to become special education teachers in our district. special education teachers in our district through our new residency-based teacher apprenticeship program. As you may recall, this program, which you all approved earlier this year, is being delivered through a private partnership with Bloom Board and Lake Erie College. It will begin in January and allows current CCSD employees to complete a three-year bachelor's degree in special education while gaining direct hands-on experience in classrooms, all while continuing to earn their salary paid by the district. They will earn course credits by demonstrating mastery in their own work. In exchange for receiving their degree through this program, cohort members have signed an agreement to teach special education within the district for at least three years upon receiving their certification. This will allow us to begin building our own pipeline of special education teachers while developing and strengthening partnerships with local and state colleges and universities. The competitive selection process included about 100 people who were initially interested and a pool of 25 who submitted applications. This was eventually narrowed down to a field of seven finalists who were interviewed and the selection of four cohort members. We are also excited to share that three of the four are CCSD graduates. These cohort members were surprised right before Thanksgiving break by representatives from our Human Resources Division who visited their schools to inform them of their selection. We are pleased to be joined tonight by two of our inaugural cohort members. The other two had prior scheduled commitments and regret that they were not able to be in attendance tonight. If you are here when I call your name, if you'll come up to the stage and let us recognize you properly. Patrick Bishop, Special Education Paraprofessional, Clark Middle School.[712.61][712.61](APPLAUSE). Blake Hancock, Special Education Paraprofessional, Betty Henderson Holston Elementary School.[724.51][724.51](APPLAUSE). Harold Faison, Academic Interventionist, Fowler Drive Elementary School.[734.16][734.16](APPLAUSE). And Clark Patman, Academic Interventionist, Whitehead Road Elementary School.[742.38][742.38](APPLAUSE). You guys move together. If their principals, family, or administrators are here, we invite you to come up and have your picture taken as well. You're making a lot of trips up there, Mr. Maxwell. That's good. Now, I'm going to say to you the same things I said to our Reach Scholars: We want to see you back here in three years with that college degree in hand and your certification under your belt to become a teacher at Clark County School District.[770.01][770.01](APPLAUSE). Okay, look this way, move over just... There you go, so we can see you. Wonderful. Thank you, and again, congratulations.[785.82][785.82](APPLAUSE). You have a lot of hard work ahead of you. And finally, congratulations. I'd like to ask Dr. Hooker to come up, and Ms. Butts, please join me center stage. I know, you know, when I call your name, it might not be a pleasant experience. Tonight, we would like to recognize and thank our outgoing board member, Claudia Butts, for her service to our community over the past two years as the BOE Representative for District Two. Over the last two years, Ms. Butts has attended graduations, Teacher and Support Person of the Year banquets, retirement dinners, and many other functions in support of our students and staff. We have appreciated her unwavering support and dedication to making decisions that are of the best interest of the long-term well-being of our district. We wish her well as she rolls off the board at the end of this month to begin her next adventure. Thank you again, Ms. Butts, and we hope that you will come back often.[848.76][848.76](APPLAUSE). This concludes our recognitions for December. I'll now turn it back over to you, Mr. Evans, for any recognitions that you and the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. I love seeing the students. I mean, that's what we're about, right? I think it's great. So thank you, and really looking forward to this paraprofessional-to-teacher residency program. I see great things, and must be kind of exciting to be on the frontier of that there. All right. We are now at item number five, which is the public comments. I have a script that I will read following policy BCBI. Each individual speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. At this point, remarks must be concluded. No speaker will indulge in personal attacks, and all comments are to be addressed directly to the Board of Education. To protect the privacy of students, speakers shall refrain from identifying specific students by name. No individual or group shall be retaliated against in any manner for speaking during public participation. Personal concerns may be addressed in writing to the superintendent and the president of the Board of Education. Written copies of comments may be provided to the board. At a board meeting, board members will not respond to questions or comments from the public. The district may respond to public input as needed or appropriately within 10 working days. The use of obscene, profane, vulgar, physically threatening, or abusive remarks will not be allowed. Loud and boisterous conduct or comments by speakers or members of the audience are not allowed. Now that we all know the rules, we will start with Jamie Mays.
In November 2022, I attended a community meeting at a library where Dr. Hooker called the community to take action. He told us that we were not going to solve the problems of gang violence, drug and alcohol abuse, and academic underachievement in Athens without community involvement. He spoke passionately, specifically calling on organizations led by Black folks to basically put up or shut up. Ernest Elder was at that meeting too and answered that call. Ernest grew up in Broad Acres, attended Berks, Clark Middle, and Clark Central High School. He's the founder and president of the Community and Youth Development Organization, an Athens-based organization that envisioned and built a playbook for a youth basketball league. In just a couple of years and through the support of the school district, this effort has grown into something that has created school pride and an increase in parental and community involvement. Additionally, the Athens Tutorial Program has been in operation for more than two decades, funded through a partnership with ACC Government, Athens Housing Authority, and CCSD. Mr. Elder was approached by the Board of the ATP when they were looking for new leadership, and it seemed like the perfect opportunity for the 400 children that were already being served through the CYDO Basketball League to receive tutoring as well. At the time, ATP had programming funded by ACC Gov. and AHA at Gaines and Stroud, but would need additional funding from CCSD to expand to Holston and Oakleythorpe Avenue, the two lowest-performing elementary schools on the West Side. I was confused then when I saw a letter circulating from Ernest about last-minute crippling financial demands being made by the district to the CYDO Basketball League, so I reached out to get clarity. What I've discovered is a shameful, though predictable, case of CCSD actively working to block community involvement. CCSD took CYDO as model of care for our youth, repackaged it internally, and is now attempting to box CYDO out of the conversation. Shortly before CYDO received the devastating financial request from the district, the Athens Tutorial Program was informed that CCSD would not be supporting their tutoring program moving forward. I have repeatedly witnessed community leaders show up, ready to do the work that is necessary to partner with our school district, only to get burned out, vilified, and ultimately ignored by the school district. The State Board of Education grants CCSD the maximum flexibility allowed by law, with the understanding that CCSD is committed to increasing community involvement and accountability. We are halfway through our second-five-year charter system contract and still struggling for authentic, organic community collaboration. The constant erasure of the work of Black leadership in Athens isn't happening by accident. This is a calculated, strategic, and performative effort from the central office to create confusion, deter true collaboration, and answer with accountability to the community. It's disrespectful. CCSD gets $1.4 million in additional dollars in funding from the state of Georgia for being a charter district. $600,000 of that goes to LSG teams, but what's happening with the other $800,000? CCSD needs to take a real, honest look at how their words don't align with their actions. Thank you.[1163.88][1163.88](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Next, Reverend Sandoval.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Dr. Hooker, Acting Vice President Evans, to the board members. I come before you tonight to discuss about renaming the Cedar Show's baseball field after Coach James Holston. Coach Holston was a pillar of this community. Coach Holston served as an educator and a coach for a fourth high school, Athens Industrial, Bonnet Harris, Clark Central, and retired at Cedar Show. I'm a graduate, a class of 78, and we've been coming ever since August, four, five months, and we ain't tired. We just ask if it would be in your best interest to rename this baseball field after Coach James Holston, realizing that his wife has a middle school name after her, that this should show you that both of them was a great pillar of this community. And, Ms. Butts, we're going to miss you. God bless you. But I would just ask that you all would find it in your heart to rename Cedar Show's baseball field after Coach James Holston. Thank you for your time.[1267.33][1267.33](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Reverend Sandoval. Anthony Pittman, Mr. Pittman?
Our school superintendent Buckler, our school district members want to say good evening to you. I come on behalf again, petition that Coach James Holston be... that his name be... that the school baseball field be named after him. Again, he was a pillar of the community. We are standing on his back because he was a strong man, quiet man, but a very thorough in helping kids in school. I'm a class of 78, a resident of Athens, Clark County, and I just want to petition y'all to reconsider naming the baseball field at Cedar Show's High School after James D. Holston. Thank you very much.[1338.13][1338.13](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. Pittman. Next up is Audrey Hughes. Hughes?
All right. Good evening. My name is Audrey Hughes, and I'm invested in this community and the education of its young people in multiple ways. I'm a CCSD teacher, science, energy, and adventure team sponsor, community volunteer, and Athens, Clark County resident. Tonight, I would like to say thank you to the Board of Education members for your service and vision for Clark County School District students. Your work is challenging, and the thought you put into the decision-making is appreciated. Those of us in the trenches have noticed a difference, and we do thank you. Your agenda tonight includes taking a vote on solar for Clark Middle School. Clark Middle is in the midst of a rebuild, and now is the right time to try something new and innovative like solar. Disruption at this stage will be minimal, and adding solar is more cost-effective now than adding it after the construction is complete. CCSD's strategic plan for 2024-2029 has three key priorities. One is connected culture, two, optimized talent, and finally, thriving students. Solar at Clark Middle as a pilot project supports the district's three priorities and key components of the district's beliefs. And I'm going to read them to you, just in case you haven't seen them lately. One of those is we must embrace new ideas, technologies, techniques, to be responsive to the evolving needs of our learners in the rapidly changing world. The next one it really applies to is students and staff deserve an environment where enthusiasm for learning is encouraged and modeled. And finally, students deserve learning experiences that are engaging, relevant, and challenging. Embracing solar by starting at Clark Middle now is a way to show support of the district's mission and prepare students for the future in a realistic, relevant, and authentic way. Voting yes to solar at Clark Middle is a step towards a more sustainable CCSD that will have ripple effects in the school district and community. CCSD might even discover that they save money on their energy bills and move forward with solar at other schools in the district. Thank you for listening, and I hope that you will vote yes to solar at Clark Middle.[1500.83][1500.83](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Next, Catherine Melton.
I was hoping to speak a little bit later, but here goes. My name is Catherine Melton, and I am one of the school counselors at Clark Central. I'm thrilled to hear from so many colleagues, students, families about the incredible work of the Georgia College Advising Corps and our advisors, which hopefully makes it clear to the board that this is a partnership worth maintaining. I began my career in education as a college advisor myself. I served in the Virginia College Advising Corps from 2009 to 2011 at Alexandria City High School. When I started in the position, I had no intention of working in education, but as it turns out, my time as a college advisor completely changed my whole life trajectory. I immediately found a calling, and not a day goes by where I don't think back to my experience as a college advisor. It has shaped my entire worldview and approach to education, equity, justice, and student support. The College Advising Corps aims to recruit recent college graduates who are energetic, eager to learn, are looking for a first real-world job of training, networking, and professional development, and to make an impact on their community. These young adults are able to serve as near-peer mentors who are best equipped to describe the college experience having just experienced it themselves. They receive in-depth and ongoing training, all provided by GCAC. Since I have been at Clark Central, each and every one of our college advisors have been spectacular and also unique. They have also been critical members of our counseling team, providing services that we would not be able to provide, given our caseload numbers and other responsibilities. CCSD's partnership with GCAC gives our district an opportunity to connect these future leaders with our students and families in order to share their knowledge and encouragement, and in turn allows advisors to better understand the unique assets and challenges within our community. Their experience working in our high schools shows them how education is intertwined in all aspects of life: employment, housing, healthcare, and so on. And though they provide resources and supports for all of our students, their services can have a life-changing impact on first-generation, low-income, and underrepresented populations. In short, our college advisors are optimized talent who contribute to a connected culture within our community to support all of our thriving students, to discover their own unique path for the future, and our college advisors are not paid very much, so we're getting them at a bargain. Many college advisors will go on to work in education, and CCSD has additional opportunity to recruit and retain these educators who already have firsthand experience working with our students and families and understanding our community's needs. We have several GCAC alums here. But even those college advisors who do not stay in education will go on to be leaders in their chosen field, and their experience within CCSD will serve as a foundation for their work and worldview moving forward. I believe it's worth it for us to continue to invest in this crucial partnership.
Thank you.[1706.88][1706.88](APPLAUSE). Christian Barner?
I'll do all I can to avoid that alarm. It's really loud. All right, my name is Christian Barner. I'm an academic support and family engagement specialist at Clark Central High School. Currently, in my 19th year with CCSD, I'm also the father of a sophomore at Clark Central. As I shared in the letter I sent each of you, I was shocked when I read the decision to end CCSD's 14-year partnership with the Georgia College Advising Corps. I detailed some of what college advisors do, including meeting with every senior to discuss post-graduation plans, hosting college and career preparation events, guiding students and families through the complicated processes of applying for financial aid into college, as well as planning and overseeing year-end senior events. Throughout my day, I see our college advisors seated outside classrooms, calling seniors out one at a time for conferences. I've worked alongside them in planning and hosting events, as well as providing support to families. I've seen the overwhelmingly positive impact they have had, the support they have provided our faculty, and the contributions they have made to our school's culture. When families considering transferring to CCSD ask about college prep support, I proudly explain to them that we have a dedicated college advisor. Clark Central has five school counselors to support 1,884 students. 465 of them are seniors. Four hundred and sixty-five of them are seniors. A college advisor is essential to ensuring college and career support is provided to these seniors and their families. If they are eliminated, what plan does CCSD have to replace them? CCSD does not train college advisors. CCSD does not even pay their full salaries. Why would board members choose to end an affordable and impactful program? In a larger sense, my concern has been that a personnel and support decision of this magnitude seemed to have been made without consulting the schools. I have not spoken with a counselor or administrator or teacher who has asked their thoughts prior to this decision. It appeared that a very hurried decision was made with very little consideration. A decision to eliminate a longstanding position that is not supervisory or administrative or one consumed by meeting with other staff members, but one that provides a very specific and much-needed service to our community. College advisors are in the trenches, working directly with our students and families every day to ensure that in their last years with us, they are prepared for transitioning to what lies ahead. And with one board meeting, a message was sent to these college advisors that their work is not important. And school faculties were told their opinions and observations aren't worth considering before a major decision that directly affects them, their schools, their schools and their students is made. I am confident that the board, just like all of us, is committed to doing what is best for our students, families, and community. I encourage its members to renew the partnership with the Georgia College Advising Corps and to move forward with a commitment to consulting with stakeholders prior to casting their votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Kat Mills? I'm sorry? It says Kat Mills.
Um, yeah, that's a tough act to follow. I'll try and rush through this. I'm from the north, so I'll apologize now for talking to you so quickly. Um, I'm currently a teacher in the district. I'm also a parent. My, um, well, my speech tonight is talking in two parts. One, the college advisement decision, and two, the ostensible reason for that decision was to somehow better prepare students through seventy thousand dollars a year split between two schools to prepare them for college. So, um, thank you for not requiring thirty days' advance notice to get my thoughts approved by y'all, as is planned for future teacher professional presentations. So, I have a senior currently at Clark Central. Onyx has been with the district since tenth grade. We moved from Oakwood County. So Onyx this year met with Mr. Zayas four times. This semester, two times with Mr. Smallwood last year. Onyx applied for UGA three times, twice for dual enrollment, and then once for early admissions. Got recommendation letters, built up this college resume, but was in the bottom twenty-five percent of UGA's early acceptance metrics. On November twenty-second, Onyx was allowed into UGA's early acceptance program. There's two very good reasons for that, likely the recommendation letters, but also the six meetings with the college advisors that get paid a pittance for the work that they do. The, the thing that made the difference for them was those meetings. Onyx got a five on the AP Lang test, being one of the nine point eight percent of students in the nation who took the test to do so. I have two graduate degrees. My undergraduate degree is in English. Onyx has phenomenal teachers who have walked them through the college application process and has multiple levels of support. But what about kids who don't? First-generation students who are going to college for the first time, students who have just come over to the United States seeking better opportunities from other nations and are coming in without that built-in support that my child has already available to them. We also add in the fact that we are crippling our students by forcing them to focus on standardized test excerpts and removing their ability to critically think about the reading and writing that they do. Our district's obsession with standardizing English and focusing on canned curriculum developed by organizations that have no actual stake in our district or our children is a problem. The reason given for the money being removed from the college advisor program was college readiness. Here's some suggestions on how to fix that. Stop outsourcing our student education to curriculum developers. Stop insisting on standardized tests and excerpts for everything. There's a wealth of research showing we are actively crippling our children. There is plenty in the news if you'd like to read it. Partner with the counselors. Don't undermine them. The suggested ratio for success is one to two hundred and fifty. At Clark Central, we are one to four hundred and seventy-one. So how are they supposed to add on all of the college readiness stuff in addition to all of the other things they do? I have four other cards, but not enough time. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Kapcha? Kevin Kapcha?
Good evening, Clark County Board of Education. My name is Kevin Kapcha, the 2024 CCSD MLK District District Writing Contest winner and an incoming student at Stanford University this fall. Tonight, I stand before you on behalf of Mr. Zayas, the college and career advisor at Clark Central High School, and the Georgia College Advising Corps to share how their work has profoundly profoundly impacted not only my life, but also the lives of countless students in our community. As a first-generation proven American, I faced countless uncertainties navigating the college admissions process. From finding obscure sections on the Common App to understanding the concept of safety schools, Mr. Zayas was there. When I hit a roadblock filling out a financial aid document, which would ultimately lead to me getting a full ride scholarship to Stanford University, Mr. Zayas was there. He went above and beyond by collaborating with the Georgia College Advising Corps and his network appears to give me the answers I needed, answers I could not find online. At one of the most stressful times in a student's life, Mr. Zayas was there. Mr. Zayas informed me that as a salutatorian in Georgia, I qualified for automatic admission to Georgia Tech, a pivotal piece of information no other school official had shared with me. That information was a relief and a test to how Mr. Zayas is involved with students in all facets, not just the abstract college admissions process. As a product of CCSD, Whitehead Road Elementary School, Bernie Harris Lyons Middle School, and now Clark Central High School, I've first, I've seen firsthand the barriers many of my peers face. Our district serves a diverse population, with many students navigating systemic challenges tied to socioeconomic status, race, and ethnicity. To defund this program or eliminate Mr. Zayas's position would unravel critical support for these students, placing a further burden on an already overworked faculty and administration. Access to higher education is transformative, not just for individuals, but for communities. At a time when education equity is under threat nationally, CCSD must stand firm in its commitment to every student, regardless of race, gender, and economic background. Programs like the Georgia College Advising Corps are not luxuries, but rather are necessities for fostering opportunity and upward mobility. Defunding this program would be a step backward for our district and for our values. Let's continue to lead by example in the state of Georgia and invest in our students' future. Thank you.
Thank you. Paisley Wiggum? Paisley Wiggum? And if I could remind the speakers to please speak into the microphone so that way the folks at home who are watching online can hear you as well. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Paisley Wiggum. Here from Athens, Georgia. I'm a college and career advisor in Atlanta, Georgia, serving for a second year. Each year in the program, we are asked, why do you advise? I advise because I want students to have the necessary resources they need to be successful. My college advisor from Cedar Show's High School made sure I had the necessary resources to succeed. Courtney Reese, my advisor from 2018 to 2019, made sure I signed up for my SAT and ACT for free by giving me access to fee waiver codes. She then made sure I had a well-balanced college list, but still kept in mind that UGA was my number one option. She helped me refine my college essays, helped me gain over three thousand dollars in scholarships, and went as far as helping me, um, she went as far as helping me understand my financial aid award letters. On March fifteenth of 2019 is when I found out I had been accepted into UGA and couldn't wait to share the news with her. May twelfth of 2023 is the day I graduated from UGA. And two months later, I started this amazing position. We went through extensive training so that we could help students navigate the complex college admissions process, including researches college options, completing applications, and applying for financial aid. We also host career fairs, job fairs, military rep visits, and military panels for our students who don't want to pursue the traditional college route. With national averages for student-to-counselor ratio exceeding four hundred students per counselor, far above the recommended ratio for two hundred and fifty to one, it's clear our counselors are stretched thin. How can they possibly find the time to plan events or provide personalized guidance the students need to navigate life after high school? Simply adding one more colleague to their team can make all the difference, ensuring students receive the attention and support they deserve. Last year as a corps, we held eighteen thousand and five highly individualized one-on-one sessions with seniors, arranged four thousand and eighty-three meetings with families to help assist with post-secondary plans, ensured approximately three thousand seniors completed the FAFSA despite the hiccups last year, and tracked a total of twenty-three thousand and four hundred and seventeen submitted college applications. This county is one of the poorest in Georgia, yet it holds incredible potential. We are already working with limited resources, but the Georgia College Advising Corps has been a lifeline for our students, helping them access opportunities they otherwise wouldn't have. To take away resources that were given to us right at home is not just a setback for our students. Excuse me. It is not just a setback for our students. It is also an injustice to the future for this community. The work that we do in this program goes far beyond just helping students get into college. We are providing them with tools to unlock the world, to unlock a world of opportunity. This program impacts a large, it compacts our community at a large, and we lose the potential of countless young people who could contribute to our future and to our society. Thank you.
Thank you. Spencer Waldrop?
Good evening. My name is Spencer Waldrop and I'm a senior at Cedar Show's High School. And I spent a lot of time with our college advisor at Cedar Show's, Ms. Rodriguez, over the past few months, and I even met with her this morning. But in the past, near the end of my junior year, I wanted to get a head start on college and I applied for dual enrollment for the next semester at the University of North Georgia. I myself have always been big about college and I wanted to be the first in my family to go to college. Shows what makes me care about school so much. But I was pretty stubborn and didn't want professional help myself, so I applied myself. And I say it myself, but it really became me and three friends scrambling and trying to figure out how to sign up, trying to figure out how to send test scores to my transcript, finding out what forms fell out, and so on. And it was a mess and the whole experience really gave me a bad feeling on what actually applying to college would be like. And then it became my senior year and all I knew about college was that I wanted to go into architecture for my major and go to Georgia Tech because I knew they had a good program. But that's really all I knew. And so I realized I couldn't go to such a good school on a whim and so my chances were looking low, so I looked out for help. And I knew our school had a new college advisor and actually even met with Ms. Rodriguez at her open house. And so I scheduled a meeting with her in the upcoming week and when we met, we talked about my future plans after high school. And my talk really gave me a good visual about where I want to be in school and where I realized I was and how I went about everything the completely wrong way. And I was trying to go to schools that didn't have my majors and didn't even start my Common App yet and it was very late into the year. And so it looked pretty rough for me and even rough for applying for a regular decision, which I didn't even know was a thing at the time. But she knew exactly how to help me and through the past few months, she's guided me through setting up my Common App. She gave me a list of schools I could go to. She constantly was updating me on important dates and deadlines I should know. She showed me how to write persuasive and concise college essays and proofread them and revise them and gave me really helpful feedback. And I mean, she really kept on top of me in all of what I needed to do to have a good future in college. And so I make it a priority to talk to her at least once a week now, but still constantly email her, always asking for further help. And I just finished all the work I need for applying to colleges and I applied for UGA, Georgia Tech, KSCU, and Georgia College of State. And I currently just made it to regional review for the Jefferson and Walton Scholarship for Full Ride at University of Virginia because of her persistence and guidance. And to sum up her and all other college advisors' importance to me and many others, that I would have ended up somewhere I hated at high school if it wasn't for them being for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Allen?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Patrick Allen and I'm a first-year Foundation Fellow at the University of Georgia and an alumnus of Clark Central, where I graduated as valedictorian in the spring. Throughout high school, I worked closely with UGA-aligned programs to research Athens and the drive to create social, economic, and racial equity in the city. In such a diverse school district, it is clear that marginalized students face serious challenges. Among these challenges, the one that I noticed most starkly as a student was a lack of access to higher education. No matter how we slice it, students are inherently at a disadvantage at Title I high schools. We see limited access to SAT prep, a lack of information on colleges, and a lower counselor-to-student ratio. The list goes on. A couple of months ago, after I graduated, I sat in Mr. David Ragsdale's classroom to discuss the need for more college advising at Clark Central. As a student, I felt that there wasn't enough focus on getting seniors to college. Most students don't receive college advice at home. And I'm sure that Mr. Zayas, for example, is stretched to his limits as a result of this. I certainly saw it with Mr. Smallwood, who was here with us today last year. As we talked, a student came into the classroom. She had come to Mr. Ragsdale for help with navigating the Common App, which she was struggling with. That interaction reinforced my desire to advocate for our college advisors and find ways to make their jobs easier. A couple of weeks later, Mr. Ragsdale called me up. He told me that funding had been cut for the Georgia College Advising Corps. Clark County high schools would no longer have a college advisor. Compared to private schools where counselor-to-student ratios can be one to ten, one to fifteen, we wouldn't have a ratio at all. College counselors, who are often the catalyst for immense directional change in students' lives, will no longer be available if the motion does not pass. Research from the College Board has found that first-generation students, which we have many of in Clark County, are thirty percent more likely to apply to college with the guidance of a college counselor. In Clark County of all places, it is a serious misjudgment to defund the service that puts marginalized students so clearly on the path to a better and more successful future. Thank you.
Thank you. Heidi Niblink?
My name is Heidi Niblink and I'm here to speak in support of the college advisors. I began working at Clark Central High School in 2006. Although I'm a school counselor, let me invite you to do some math with me. At CCHS, we have five school counselors who divide up a nearly nineteen-hundred student caseload. That makes each counselor responsible for approximately three hundred and eighty students. Each counselor has approximately one hundred seniors on their caseload. As of today, I have a hundred and eight. Each counselor has approximately a hundred juniors on their caseload. We meet every junior and every senior on our caseload individually. Let's say between prepping, meeting, and following up, that's three hours of time per student. Let's say that works out to three hundred hours of one counselor's time per semester. Let's say we have approximately eighty-five days per semester to work with students, eight hours a day, that works out to two, six hundred and eighty hours per counselor per semester. Half of that is gone already, just from our junior and senior meetings. Then we have all the freshmen and sophomores, recommendation letters, completing document requests for scholarships, managing approximately forty-five oh four plans per caseload, providing academic advisement, personal counseling, crisis response, and the list goes on. But what about those students, those juniors and seniors who require more than the three hours you've allotted to them? The ones who've been given all the info but don't even know where to start or are too anxious to start? Those are the students you pull into your office, who you have open up their Chromebooks, log into College Board, and register for the SAT while you walk them through every section, where you sit and coach them through their first college application, screen by screen, and high-five them when they've completed it. Can I give that level of service to fifteen kids a year? Absolutely. Can I do it for thirty? Maybe. Can I do it for everyone who needs it? Absolutely not, because math. Enter the college advisor. College advisors make the impossible possible. College advisors give our students the individual support they need to successfully navigate an increasingly complex college application process. They have the training and expertise to help students negotiate financial aid systems and access resources that change from year to year, legislative session to legislative session. In the past, only a handful of athletes ever got to have a public decision day. Now all of our students are celebrated on Decision Day, coordinated and hosted by our college advisor. I was at Clark Central before there was. I was at Clark Central before there was a College Advising Corps program, and I can promise you that despite our counseling department's considerable expertise and good intentions, the math does not work for us to be able to serve all of our students at the level they actually need to make the transition from high school to their post-secondary dreams. Please continue funding the great work of the college advisors. It's a bargain.
Shamika Bolton?
Good evening. My name is Shamika Bolton, and I'm one of the five counselors at Cedar Shoals High School. I am speaking before you this evening to strongly advocate for the continuation of the college advisor positions at both high schools in our school district. Having served as the site liaison for the college advisors at Cedar Shoals High School since our first college advisor in August of two thousand and sixteen, I can assure you that all seniors have benefited from having the opportunity to receive post-graduation planning assistance from our college advisors. We are moving with pride and purpose at Cedar Shoals High School. In my role as the site liaison, I meet with the college advisor weekly to discuss how many seniors she has met with and her weekly activity plans. Our college advisors are required to meet with every senior to provide individualized post-graduation assistance. In addition, they plan college lunch visits, assist students with college applications, provide financial aid assistance, scholarship assistance, ACT/SAT registration. They plan our college profairs, FAFSA nights, decision days, and when funding is available, they plan our college tours. As school counselors, we are beyond grateful to work collaboratively with our college advisors. Without their support, the work we do will become even more challenging and difficult to sustain. Our college advisors work tirelessly to provide the much-needed personalized support, ensuring that each student, regardless of socioeconomic background or prior exposure to higher education, has particularly, has particularly the opportunity to pursue their academic and career goals. For many students, those who are underrepresented or first-generation students, our college advisors help them envision and take concrete steps toward their future success as well as provide encouragements to students. Given the increasing complexity of college admissions, financial aid, and post-graduation career options, the need for college advisors is even more critical than ever. By continuing to support our college advisors, we ensure that all students, no matter their circumstances, are given the tools and guidance they need to succeed and achieve their fullest potential. I strongly urge the school board to support the college advisor positions at both high schools. We are better together in providing all students with the essential support they need to break generational barriers and succeed in their college and career aspiration and dreams. We are truly better together in helping students thrive. Investing in our college advisors is an investment in our students' futures and in the futures of our community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Michael Obi Okoye?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Obi Okoye. I'm currently a freshman at UGA and an alumni from Clark Central. College was always something that was on my radar. Unfortunately, I had the privilege of having a support system at home. But in my experience at Clark Central, that can't be said for a lot of the kids who look like me. We do not get that much support from home. I'm a first-generation immigrant, and a lot of them I know had no idea what they were doing after high school. My college advisor was Mr. Smallwood, and I cannot speak to the amount of help that he provided for students like me. Students who had no idea where they were going or what they were going to do after college. My advisor, Mrs. Smallwood, was someone that we could all rely on, someone who could provide us with direction where we had nowhere else to go, and someone who made applying for college and thinking about our future something that was on the forefront of every student's mind. Not only did Mr. Smallwood have a tremendous effect on the lives of most of my friends, he also helped me get over two, twenty thousand dollars in scholarships. I didn't bring any statistics with me, unfortunately, but I'm sure every teacher and advisor in this room will tell you or has already told you and attest to the amount of help and support that our college advisors give students. And for every one of the kids that I know who are still in high school, they can all attest to the support that their college advisors give us. Because without them, a lot of us would have nowhere to go and no idea what to do. And in conclusion, I, one of the sayings that I live my life with is that it takes a village. And taking away the funding for this program will not only be a disservice to these adults who have cultivated their lives to helping students and enriching our lives, but will also be a huge disservice to the amount of students who need their help. The amount of students who don't have support systems that a lot of us were privileged to have. And taking away this funding is an extreme detriment to the enrichment of our village. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Rodriguez Lopez?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Andrea Rodriguez, and I am a proud college advisor with the Georgia College Advising Corps, currently serving at Cedar Shoals High School. The issues presented today is deeply personal to me. As a first-generation American high school graduate, I didn't have the benefit of a college advisor. Navigating the overwhelming and intricate post-secondary education system was challenging, and I relied on friends whose siblings had gone through the process for guidance. But such does not need to be the case for this district. At Cedar Shoals, I joined a counseling team that shares a unified mission: to serve our students. Since my first day, they have welcomed me as part of a family, working collaboratively to meet our students' needs. My recent experience as a college graduate, paired with consistent training through the GCAC, helps to bring fresh insights and up-to-date knowledge about higher education. I assist students with building plans to help them reach their dreams. This is consistent of evenings staying late to coordinate all the details, sometimes even until 7:00 PM. However, my role goes far beyond providing academic advice for the students. A critical part of my job is building trust and relationships with my students, meeting them where they are at, addressing their unique needs and challenges. For some, the hurdle isn't just applying to college, but becoming the first high school graduate in their family. Through our work, I've also identified and supported students with socio-emotional needs, acting as a bridge between them and the counseling team. This holistic approach is also what makes GCAC so impactful, and it's about supporting the whole student. At Cedar Shoals, we are not just a team, we are a family. The success of our students requires all of us working together, and I ask you to vote in favor of this program because it is an investment in the future of our students, their families, and our community. Programs like GCAC not only break down barriers to higher education, but also empower students to dream bigger and achieve more. Thank you for your time and your commitment to our students, and please consider bringing and keeping this incredible value that GCAC brings to the district.
Thank you very much. Travis Browner? No Travis Browner? Okay, thank you. All right. Alejo Josez?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alejo Josez. I'm a graduate of the University of Georgia and currently work as the college and career advisor at Clark Central High School through the College Advising Corps. Being an advisor is more than just a job to me. I first became passionate about working with local schools during my volunteer work at Classic City High School through the Service Learning Program at UGA. Everyone told me that it was going to be tough, and some days it was, but it didn't matter. I saw myself in those students and knew their potential. This is exactly how I feel now, working at Clark Central. I am a child of immigrant parents, and Spanish is my first language, much like many of the students I currently work with. I did not have someone to help me fill out the FAFSA, look at scholarship options, or help me dream a little bigger. To pay for school, I took out the max amount I could of unsubsidized loans because I thought that was my only option. I still look back and think it is a miracle that I graduated college and wish I had someone in my position to help me avoid all those obstacles. But instead, I will be paying back thousands of dollars in debt for the foreseeable future. I am here today despite these challenges and do not wish the same for the students I serve. We should be doing everything we can to give this next generation of young people the help they deserve. We, as a county, should be looking beyond, not just at getting them to graduation, but to adulthood as well. To remove my position would certainly be a detriment to our students, both in the short and long term. I already felt that my role as an advisor was appreciated, and the impact has been profound. Hearing these comments tonight from students, families, and fellow coworkers has cemented that for me. I ask the members of the board who are doubtful of our program to reconsider their decision, given our strong community support and demonstrated successes. Thank you.
Thank you. Luanne Bell? Luanne Bell?
Mr. Evans, if I may, while we wait for the next speaker, I need to leave, but may I please call in so I can vote and we can maintain warm?
Absolutely, Ms. Holtham.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Cory Pringle?
Hello, good evening. I am a teacher at Clark Central High School. I teach English-language learners, so many of our population is Hispanic that I work with. I've worked in the district for seventeen years, and I'm a ginormous advocate for my students. I am also a parent of a senior who has been accepted and is going to college. And I'm just here to advocate for the need of our college advisors. I've been working with high schools for many, many years. In the past five or six years, I've had eleventh-grade advisees. I've called in our college advisors to come and talk to my students directly because they, many of my students are first-generation and don't have support at home for the understanding of the college process. I, in my years, feel like I'm pretty knowledgeable about college. And as a parent, helping my child apply and go to college, it is completely terrifying and confusing. So we need these people to help us so much. I am very, very concerned that if we don't keep our college advisors, that we don't have the skills as teachers and the capacity as counselors. And I don't know who will be able to help students make it to college and be successful past high school. My child also has met with Mr. Zias many times, or I shouldn't say many, as many times as we can. There are so many things that are, that are challenging about college. FAFSA is like a complete other language. My child has a learning disability, and having her get into college is very important. And we met with Mr. Zias, who gave us many pieces of advice to help that her be successful. He has continued to email us and connect us to other people to help navigate how to deal with college with her learning disability. And I just believe that as a district, we do truly care about our kids, and not just why they're with us, but, but as beyond, as they become adults. And I just hope that you can decide to keep our advisors. Thank you.
Thank you. Monica Quiñones?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Monica Quiñones, and I am a school counselor at Cedar Shoals High School. I am here to advocate for the continued partnership with our college and career advisors in our high schools. As a school counselor, I see firsthand the challenges many of our students face when navigating their post-graduation options. For students from underserved or underrepresented backgrounds, the path to higher education or fulfilling careers can often feel like an insurmountable obstacle. College and career advisors play a vital role in ensuring these students have the resources and guidance they need to succeed. They help, they help them understand and access scholarships, financial aid, internships, and other opportunities that they may not otherwise be aware of or able to access. For example, our college and career advisor worked diligently to identify first-generation students who meet criteria for incredible opportunities such as ClustBridge. She met with each student individually and urged each one to apply, as well as help them finish the application, and also collaborated with the counseling department to ensure that the application process was complete. As publicly announced, we are grateful to have had two students match with the university out of only a hundred and thirteen, which I attribute a huge part to our advisor. Our advisor is an invaluable member of our team and family. She is crucial and helps us tremendously in meeting the needs of each and every student. College and career advisors take the lead in programming, often working late nights and helping, and helping, and holding individualized meetings with every senior to support their post-secondary goals. This collaboration allows us to provide more comprehensive support for every student, especially those who need it most. We are undoubtedly better together when we are a team with the college and career advisors included. Without this continued partnership with our advisors, the gap between underserved and underrepresented students and their peers will only widen. I urge you to continue investing in college and career advisors as they are essential to ensuring all students, regardless of their background, have an equal opportunity to succeed. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Ada Nakashi?
Hi. My name is Ada Nakashi, and I'm a senior at Clark Central High School. I'm somebody with a learning disability, and applying for college has been so stressful. I don't think people understand that having a learning disability truly does make you feel like you can't go anywhere, because it does affect a lot of things. I would like to advocate to keep the college advisors because I wouldn't be into any of the colleges I got accepted to without Mr. Zias. He was actually one of the first people to congratulate me when I got into Instant Decision Day into KSCU. I think it's super important for the students who don't have the support at home and for the students who do, because it's so super hard to navigate Common App and all the other resources that you need to get into college. I also know that I have many peers who are very shocked to hear that they may be getting the resources they need at school taken away. There's also students who don't, there's also students I know who are underclassmen who found out about this today and were shocked and scared because they don't know what they're going to do without the support of a college advisor. If they don't have that support, how they're going to get into college, where they're going to go. So I think it's super important that we keep them as part of our community because they really do help students more than we'll ever know. Thank you.
Thank you. Lane Holloway? Thank you. Lane Holloway? Moving on. Sanel Mack? Mack? Moving on. Gabriel Smallwood?
Good afternoon, everyone. Dr. Hooker, the board, it's an honor to stand before you today. My name is Mr. Gabriel Smallwood, and I'm the former college advisor of Clark Central High School, and I advised from 2022 until June of 2024. So I stand before you today. I'm not going to repeat a lot of things, because we've heard from students, we've heard from parents, we also heard from teachers and counselors that this position is very important. So I will take a different approach, and if you all check on your desk, you will see that there's a paper on there of scholarship. So this scholarship, the scholarship form was given out last year on this night, and as you can see there, it shows the impact that this position has, in terms of just helping students, not just only with applying to college, but helping them have the financial resources to be able to enroll into college. And as a future lawyer, I believe in evidence. As you can see, the numbers on that paper add up to more than $10 billion. And even moving forward, another paper that is on your desk is also a testament to collaboration. So as college advisors, we do collaborate with our economics teachers to go over student loans and to make sure that our students are honestly making the decisions that they are making in terms of going to that next level and what they're going to do after they leave from high school. So I stand before you all here today, and I strongly believe that we should definitely keep this position, and this position is very instrumental, not only for our students, but for our community. And right now, as I currently serve at Cedar Shoals High School as Community Schools Site Coordinator, I believe that the impact that our college advisors are still having is tremendous, and we have to keep this position. Thank you all.
Thank you. Megan Jackson? Megan Jackson? Since Ms. Jackson is not here, that concludes the public comment part of our meeting. I would like to thank the public for coming and speaking to us about things that you care about. I would like to move on to item number six on the agenda, which is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'm wondering if the board might consider an adoption of the agenda with two modifications, one being a reconsideration of the college, the Georgia College Advisor contract, which was based on what I've seen, $69,000. And then the second being consideration of the fees for this, the CY...
CYDO?
CYDO organization.
Okay. So we would put that in under eleven for business items in individual vote?
Yes, and just to take action, so to consider and take action. Both of... There's already been conversation about the Georgia College Advisor contract, but I know we also have a presentation, so definitely after that. And then, you know, we've had, we've received some information, a good bit of information, I believe, with the CYDO as well. So I think perhaps if we could have some public discussion and take action on those things. So that's the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye. What about the phone people?
Dr. Anderson said aye. I'm not sure about Ms. Hall.
Okay, all right. Well, it passed unanimously, so we're fine. Okay, we'll continue on then. So we'll add that, please, to eleven? Eleven D and eleven E. Eleven D will be the college... The college advisors, and then eleven E will be the CYDO waiver of fees. Does that work for you, Dr. Hooker? Okay, thank you. All right. So now we move on to item number seven, which is the superintendent report. Dr. Hooker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I only have a few comments for this afternoon. First of all, I would like to congratulate our Employee of the Month, as well as our Reach Scholars. Also would like to thank Ms. Butts for her service to our district and our community, and wish her well as she rolls off the board. Just a reminder that the last day of school before our winter break is Thursday, December the nineteenth. Last comment is to celebrate the first day of the winter break, our high school basketball teams will be participating in the Classic City Championship on Friday at the Atkins Ford Arena. Our boys and girls, junior varsity, varsity teams will begin playing at 1:00 PM with four games throughout the day. We urge the community to come out and to support our high school basketball teams, and that concludes my comments for today. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Hooker. I am looking forward to those basketball games. That should be pretty exciting stuff. All right, we will now move on to number eight, which is Presentations and Discussions. The first presentation we have will be on the Georgia College Advisors.
Hello, my name is Alyssa Yuhaus, and I am the Program Director of the Georgia College Advising Corps. Since 2009, our program has partnered with not only the Clark County School District...
Excuse me, ma'am. Is there any way that you could get a little closer to the microphone so that way you're a little louder, so that way...
Can you hear that?
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Since 2009, our program has partnered with not only the Clark County School District, but also with the students, parents, teachers, and counselors in this community, all with the goal to help students succeed. Our advisors help all students in the senior class and their families learn about post-secondary pathways and financial aid, and then provide them with the technical assistance they need to cross everything off their to-do list. Because advisors are in the building to help with post-secondary planning, students are able to meet with them as many times as needed throughout the year. Not only does this program mean a lot to me as the program director, it also means so much to me because from 2016 to 2018, I was the college advisor at Clark Central. And I have worked hard to get to this position to continue to serve the students in this community. Many of our past advisors feel the same way. Sorry if some of this has been said already. For example, Mr. Gabriel Smallwood, who is here tonight, now works for communities and schools at Cedar Shoals, and Ms. Brianna Johnson, who is also here, works at the UGA Career Center and assists in training our advisors. You also may know of Dr. Lawrence Harris, who served as CCSD's Chief of Community Engagement and Strategic Partnerships. Way before that, he served as the college advisor at Clark Central. I mention these things all to say that GCAC has partnered with this community to help students and their families succeed, and we produce strong public servants who continue to show that commitment. Not renewing our contract will mean that the students and families of the class of 2025 will not have a college advisor to help them through the most critical time of the year, beginning this January. I'm excited to share more about the program with you today. I have a lot to cover in a short amount of time, so I'm going to jump right in. In partnership with the College Advising Corps and the University of Georgia, the Georgia College Advising Corps, or GCAC, works in underserved high schools throughout Georgia to increase the number of low-income, first-generation, and underrepresented students who attend and complete higher education. We help students find their way to college by placing well-trained, recent college graduates in high schools to work one-on-one with students as they navigate the complex college admissions process. So you already did meet our current advisors for the 24-25 year, but I will announce them again. Andrea Rodriguez is our college advisor at Cedar Shoals, and A.J. Zayas is our advisor at Clark Central High School. The next two slides will show you last year's results and our advisors' goals for this school year. As you can see, one-on-one meetings, one-plus and three-plus college application submissions, family engagement, and FAFSA completion are key performance indicators. This is because it has been found that students who complete some or all of these steps have a higher likely, likelihood of enrolling in a post-secondary pathway. These pathways include four-year and two-year colleges, technical schools, military, and any other pathway that they choose to pursue. I believe you all received these metrics earlier this evening, so I want to point out one thing. Andrea at Cedar Shoals is required to meet with at least 259 students, or 95% of the senior class this year. Usually, they go above that 90% goal. And while the KPI states at least once, it is our expectation that they aim to meet with each student at least twice. We usually reset their KPI goal as the January comes around. Many students meet with their advisors four or more times throughout the year. Now, if you look at Clark Central, A.J. is required to meet with at least 412 students, or 90% of the senior class, twice this year, totaling at least 824 one-on-one student meetings this year. Mr. Smallwood had 940 one-on-one meetings with students in the 2023-2024 school year. Now let's look at Cedar Shoals' current progress. As of yesterday, Andrea has met with 199 seniors and 52 parents and families at least once, and 89 seniors have applied to one or more colleges. At Clark Central, as of yesterday, A.J. has met with 306 out of the 455 seniors and 89 parents at least once, and 151 seniors have applied to one or more colleges. Next, I would like to explain the National College Advising Corps. The College Advising Corps, or CAC, is the nation's largest nonprofit service organization focused on increasing post-secondary opportunity for all students. CAC has partnered with universities to support community needs since 2005, and their mission mirrors ours. For the 24-25 school year, CAC is partnering with 32 universities across 14 states who are serving more than 200,000 high school seniors. CAC uses a near-peer model to guide its mission. Students relate to people who are of similar ages, and many of our advisors come from similar backgrounds as the students they serve. This allows for students to see themselves in their advisors and look to them as inspiration. The onsite, whole-school model allows for the advisors to work full-time within their counseling departments for the entire school year. Our advisors are fully immersed and viewed as their colleges, their school's college experts. This consistent whole-school support allows counselors to focus on their many other required tasks. Another benefit of the onsite model is that our advisors work with every senior in the class, regardless of subgroup. In fact, both our advisors this year are bilingual, so they are able to provide additional support to our district's Spanish speakers. Additionally, the counseling departments work closely with advisors to plan and facilitate college-going events. These events build a college-going culture, which excites underclassmen and helps them to start thinking about their future. Our advisors help students create college lists using the best-match, best-fit advising approach. The approach helps advisors give students in creating, guides students in creating a well-balanced college list of likely-match-and-reach schools. These schools need to be a good personal, financial, and academic fit. According to CAC's 2023, 2022-2023 Annual Report, students who met with their CAC advisor had a 53% increased likelihood of rolling in college compared to students at the same school who did not. Additionally, 67% of seniors served by CAC completed their FAFSA, and nearly half of those students received help from their CAC advisor. Moving forward, I want to touch on our partnership with UGA. CAC partnered with Dr. Libby Morris at the McBeet Institute of Higher Education at UGA in 2009 to create the Georgia College Advising Corps. In the inaugural year, GCAC partnered with Dr. Robbie Hooker at Clark Central High School, which was one of four schools that piloted the program. Currently, we place 24 advisors in 19 high schools in seven districts across the state. GCAC is housed within the McBeet Institute of Higher Education, and while UGA does not provide direct funding, GCAC is able to utilize the business operations of, at UGA, and those resources include grant management, accounting, human resources, office, and training space. And it's important to note that UGA admissions is not involved in any capacity. All right. Advisor training. Our advisors undergo a month-long immersive training at UGA in July of each year. In addition to living on campus and going through training content, they take campus tours of schools across the state. They are also required to participate in monthly trainings throughout the year, some virtual, some here on campus. Although not an inclusive list, we utilize resources from USPIRE, Georgia Student Finance Commission, internal programming, and CAC for training material. We often have UGA Student Services and the Fanning Institute present to the advisors on various topics as well. Effectiveness and accountability. We have many mechanisms in place to keep our program and our advisors accountable for the work that is being done. Using our national tracking system, the advisors create monthly snapshots that are sent to school staff. Additionally, advisors meet with me once a week to go over progress and discuss successful initiatives and areas of improvement. I also make site visits to each school once a semester, but since I live in Athens, I tend to visit Clark Central and Cedar Shoals a lot more. Counselors, Ms. Bolton, who you heard from, and Ms. Barnett-Drewal, have served as site liaisons for the advisors since 2016. They help the advisors get acclimated to their school, provide the advisor with feedback, and give support. They also have the advisors attend counseling and staff meetings, and they complete their mid- and end-of-year evaluations. Essentially, the site liaison is the advisor's onsite manager. Lastly, GCAC partnered with Clark Central in 2009 and in Cedar Shoals High School in 2016. Advisors work one-on-one with students and families and plan and facilitate post-secondary-focused events. During these one-on-one meetings, advisors help students create a match-and-fit college list, register for standardized tests, help them complete college applications, explore career pathways, and help students find and apply to scholarships. During family meetings, advisors provide information, resource, resources, and technical FAFSA assistance. They also answer as many parent questions as possible, so they are able to make a well-informed decision about their students' future. These post-secondary-focused events include college and career fairs, college representative visits, college application workshops, financial aid workshops, and the end-of-year celebration decision day. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak for you. Does anyone have any questions?
Dr. Yeager?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. We have a few more slides on our PowerPoint or on our PDF. I had some questions. There's a graph that shows an increase, but it doesn't have an axis labeled. What is the x-axis of that graph?
Of this graph? Of the percent of students... It's just the percent of students over time, but it doesn't give the years. Oh, the years are up there.
Over time? The individual curves are years. Is that like over the course of a school dis, of a school year? Or what is the x-axis?
Yeah. If you see in the top right, it says 21, 22, then the lot, different colored lines.
That's what the lines are. What is the x-axis?
It would be, I might have to tag in, talk through this. It would be, I might have to tag in, something else.
Something is increasing over something. But anyway, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the data that you provided us.
Yeah, it's just trying to say, okay, so we have that goal, and with each line, that was the percentage that we hit. These graphs are created on our tableau. It's our national office, and they provide us with this data that I presented to you.
Okay. Well, my other question is, if I'm understanding correctly, particularly for Cedar, you report for 2023, it looks like about 80 students attended college in that top 10 colleges list. 80 students out of, I think your counselor's report, working with over 300 students or 200 and some students? So, does that mean that the number of students that applied is in the 200s, but the number of students attending is in the 80s? That doesn't seem very effective to me. So, it's great that you're meeting with the students, but is one of the KPIs, students actually enrolling in college?
That would, I mean, that's our intended outcome.
Sure. Is that a measured outcome, one of the measured outcomes that you report?
It is something that our national office tracks, yes.
Okay, because it's not really in the documents that we got. We see how many you're meeting with, we see how many you're getting to apply to colleges, but how many are actually enrolling from the work you do?
For the college enrollment by graduating class, there's that percentage.
Yeah, so it's like 51% of the entire class of seniors?
Yes.
That's not, it seems like the denominator should be your effectiveness, because the 51% hasn't changed over time. Right. It's been 50% since you got there in 2016. It hasn't increased.
So, it has increased from 47% to 51%, and if you see in 2019, we were at 58. And everywhere across the nation saw a plateau and a decrease in enrollment because of COVID. And so, I would say right now, we are trying to get back to where we were, and that is because of many different factors.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand, the reported KPIs are not terrifically impressive. I understand the reason we need college advisors. Nobody needs to argue with me about that. I absolutely, I think we need to up our game and have more of you, perhaps. Maybe there are too few of you, because the numbers don't really show you having a huge impact in terms of all the kids that could be going to college. That's why I voted no last time, was it doesn't seem like, I heard some of the speakers talk about a bargain. You're a bargain. We don't need a bargain basement program. We need a good, solid program for our kids to get into college.
I wouldn't say that the bargain means that we aren't an effective, solid program. The reason that the advisor cost is lower than if you were going to staff, a full-time staff member, is because we are in an AmeriCorps program, and they are on a living allowance that is maxed out this year at 37,400.
I think your students, your advisors are doing a lot of work, no doubt, absolutely. You are, it seems like we need more of you rather than fewer of you.
Correct. I completely agree.
And, yeah, okay. That was my point. But, and I would love to see more about some of the other KPIs at some point. Like you say, that's the national program tracks. I'd like to see those more. And compared to other districts in our area, because, you know, how, what is the college entrance rate of our neighboring counties? And how is Clark County trying to be better than those, if possible?
I would be happy to provide you with that data.
That's great, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jaeger. Ms. Davis, and then Dr. Gant.
So, thank you very much for the information. My reservation in voting no before was, this seems like such a vital part of our junior and senior classes, matriculation through high school. And so, if we value it, and if it is giving us a return on that investment, I'm concerned that we're not mining the information. Your organization gets the data. I don't see, this is the first time I've seen this, and I've been on this board 10 years now, 12 years. And so, again, again, and I may have forgotten, I'll claim that, but I've not, I didn't even know about your organization existing. So, my concern is, again, this is, we talk about the money, so we're talking $70,000, is that what we're talking about? Okay. This is necessary, right, for each of our high schools? And I really hate that you have to go through this for $70,000, right? So, my question is, how integral is this to the high school experience, that we have outsourced it to another agency, is what I'm concerned about? And are we missing information because a separate agency is having this communication with our parents, with our students? And that might be information, and it could be relationships that would enhance our educational experience for all of our children. So, I want to know if we're able to, you know, glean that back. And in total honesty here, I work with AmeriCorps representatives, they've done some phenomenal work in this community, and they do phenomenal work. But I don't think we should be, we shouldn't be having to beg for, for something that's necessary. We shouldn't, we shouldn't even be having this conversation.
I agree.
Yeah.
And moving forward, I can provide all the data, any data that you want, that's just not something that's been asked for in the past. We are in six other districts, and we, I provide them with data constantly. And that's just because, depending on their funding, we have a funder in Atlanta who pays for all of our eight schools and Atlanta Public Schools. We meet with them monthly to go over data. We're all very connected, and we communicate well. And if that is something that this board would like, I would be happy to provide those, that for you.
Thank you.
Dr. Gant.
I was going to say, so thank you for this information. It's definitely helpful and, I think, a lot to sift through. A couple of things I wanted to highlight are, I think, even with the, I think that's still the same slide up there, the 53%, no, I'm sorry, 51% with a class of 2023 of college Even, you know, I think even though that may not seem either like a lot or effective, I think we also have to consider that this is not work. If it was 10%, this is not work, truly, that when you look at the number of students that we have in our high schools, counselors cannot do this work. They can professionally, but they cannot practically. And so, you know, I think, and I don't know if that's more of a conversation about more data and those key performance indicators and what we really, you know, what we really want to see. I agree. I think probably needs to be more conversations around this in the future with regards to how we expand. But I think when we are talking about first-generation students, students who might be differently abled, where students with language barriers, I mean, you name it. I think how we look at effectiveness has, we have to take into account all of those things and a system that's already taxed. And so, I don't know, I just want to point out that I think with that percentage of those that are enrolled, I think that, I think it's great. Now, in reality, can we really tell what's effective? Because we haven't really, you know, when we use that term, we haven't compared this to our data before college advisors were even here, or with perhaps, well, I guess we could, with a group of students that never have had college advising. And so, I don't know, I think it is, to me, is something, it's not a huge sacrifice financially for the return that we get. And even if students are not enrolling, that other 49%, even if they go on not to enroll, at the very least, they've met with one other adult in that building who has given them tools and built their capacity in a small way, so that even after graduation, they have more information and tools than what they may have started with, so.
Oh, Dr. Gant, are you done? I'm sorry. Your light's still on, so that's why I didn't say anything. Okay. Ms. Buss, do you have anything you would like to add?
I'd like to add something, if that's all right, and I'll be brief. When I think about school, I think about the number one. Because as we look at data, you know, we kind of sometimes get lost in this idea, right? Like, you know, like, oh, it's only 42%. Oh, it's only 12, or, oh, oh, oh. But that represents a person. That represents a kid who may not have had that opportunity if we did not afford them this. And so, for me, this is kind of a no-brainer. My, my only issue that I have is with our partner up there on the Hill. We deserve more from them. We give them a lot. We do a lot for them. And they need to start being a little bit more reciprocal. That's not your job, okay? And you did a fantastic presentation, I do appreciate that. But we, we need more from them, because, you know, while we're sending more kids to Athens Tech than UGA, eh, that seems to bother me a bit. But, yeah, I think that this program is well worth it, and when it comes around to vote time, I will be voting for it. Thank you very much. Anything else from anyone? Thank you. All right. Next is CCRPI.
I'm sorry, Dr. Evans. Dr. Anderson wants to speak.
Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Dr. Anderson.
Dr. Anderson.
The sound is really bad, so I apologize for that.
Dr. Anderson, can you speak a little bit louder?
Absolutely. So, I just wanted to add a little bit of perspective on what it means to wait on our initiatives to actually make an impact in our district. And if we are revamping our literacy curriculum, and we are trying to make these strides to what it means to be a CCSD student, then we have to wait for the impact on what it means for those changes to actually evolve in our community. And the College Advisory Corps is one of those things. And so, if we are changing our literacy curriculum, and we're changing all of these other things that are impactful to our metrics, then we have to wait to understand how that has an impact in our community, and it's not on an individual level, it's on a community level. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. And again, thank you for the presentation. We appreciate it. Now, moving on to 8B, CCRPI.
Ms. Parliament?
Yes, thank you very much. Sorry. My name is James Parliament. I'm the Executive Director of Innovation Strategy and Governance here for the Clark County School District. Happy to be speaking to you all. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about the College and Career Readiness Performance Index. CCRPI has been around since 2012. And we, so this is actually the 10th time that we've had a CCRPI score, the score that we received in 2024. However, this is the first time that we've had two years to compare since 2019 due to pandemic-related interruptions in data collection and data reporting by the state of Georgia. So, now we can do some analysis, and I'm happy to bring some analysis to the board to compare year-over-year differences, and then also to compare pre-pandemic versus post-pandemic metrics to see how CCSD is recovering from the pandemic academically. And then to also look at our comparisons between district averages and state averages. I'd also like to cover component scores, because the components are also important that are included in the CCRPI metrics. And then I also want to call attention to some CCRPI standout schools from 2024. Just briefly, to talk about why CCRPI is important, CCRPI is the main accountability system for the state of Georgia. It's public-facing. Anyone can access CCRPI information, so it's incumbent upon all of us as educators and board members and leaders in the community to understand the CCRPI system and to understand how it's calculated, and then to also understand where CCSD stands in the state as far as our accountability system. It informs everyone in our state, including policymakers, about decisions that they're making about our schools. It also drives our school improvement decisions focusing on, of course, content mastery and student growth. And it drives equity in our school district, as it also measures closing gaps between As you can see, when we compare 2023 to 2024...
I'm sorry, we don't have this presentation. It's not, it's not assembled.
It is the whole alone, I'm sorry. They're coming together. Both of those presentations are drawn, so.
All right, no, thank you, thank you. Yeah, we're like, what are you talking about?
I should have noted that, I noticed that in the agenda.
It's okay. All right, thank you.
Right. Yeah, Dr. Elder is going to follow me to talk about some specific measures that the state has with certain schools that we have. But getting back to the presentation, as you can see, year-over-year differences between 2023 and 2024 and 2019...
Mr. Ball, Mr. Ball, could you pause for one moment? I see board members scrambling and shaking their heads that they do not have it on their, on their...
It's under, it's under the next item, under CCRPI. 8C.
Is anyone else having problems besides Dr. Jaeger? We, can you give us a few moments, please, until we can get everyone on the same page? Dr. Gant, can you assist? Thank you. I think we're ready.
Okay. Great, thank you. Okay. So, you can see there has been significant progress by our elementary schools and our middle schools in terms of the overall CCRPI scores, which are calculated from the CCRPI components. Our elementary schools have grown six points year-over-year and 11 points from 2019. Middle schools have grown just over a point year-over-year, but six points over that five-year period, so pre-pandemic to post-pandemic. You can see that high schools have actually lost some ground in terms of where they were last year, and also the change from 2019 to 2024. A large part of that can be attributed to a low score in the closing gaps component for high schools, and we'll look at that in a little bit. But I do want to call attention to the growth that our elementary and middle schools are having, which indicates a healthy recovery from the pandemic-related losses that we saw in 2020, 2021, and 2022. So, the CCRPI index and... So the CCRPI index includes five indicators. There are four for elementary and middle school. The additional one at high school is graduation rates. CCRPI is heavily weighted on content mastery, which you're looking at right now. The other component that is heavily weighted is progress, which measures student progress from year to year on the Georgia Milestones Test or on the Georgia Alternative Assessment. Content mastery takes into account achievement on the ELA Math Science and Social Studies tests that students take at the end of the year. As you can see, we are doing quite well on change year-over-year. However, I would call your attention to the gap between our content mastery scores as a district and the state. And I'm apologizing. I'm going to flip between this slide and the next one to show you something that we're noticing in our data. And this is something that I think you will recognize as indicative of our system over a number of years. If you look at our progress scores, which compare relatively well to the state, they're also growing. And you can see how close the gap is there between the district and the state. And even at high school, our progress scores, our students are progressing at a higher rate than state averages. If I flip back to content mastery scores, you can see those gaps are much larger than those that we see with progress. So what this indicates to us as we analyze our data is that learning is happening in our building, certainly. Progress, our students are progressing. However, when we look at our content mastery data, the question comes, if our students are progressing, are they getting to that point of mastery? Are they mastering the standards that Georgia has set down that students are supposed to learn? And I think in a large part, that is still an area of work. It has to continue to be an area of focus as we obviously change curriculums and look at our instructional materials, as we look at our tier-one instruction, as we look at our academic ownership amongst our students. We have to always be keeping our eye on content mastery. And if you think about a theory of change, we would also like our progress scores to be higher than the state because if our progress scores are higher than the state, then that would indicate that we're catching up to the state. So even though that gap is close, we would like to see scores similar to those at the high school level where our progress scores are higher than the state. We project that if our progress scores could be higher than the state for three years, we could start to really close that gap in content mastery. So one note that I want to make with this slide, and I noticed the PDF that you all have received. The star flags were not evident for economically disadvantaged students and English learners in the PDF. That was my fault. I forgot to add the star to the flags for ELA, for CCSD at the elementary level. So closing gaps, it's difficult to compare year-to-year closing gaps, especially in 2024 since we did not have math included in our closing gap scores. The reason for that was because of changes in math standards. But I did want to show you our data for ELA and to show you our flags, where we were in our flags compared to the state. So just a brief explanation of how these flags work. Each year, our data, when it's calculated by the state, they calculate achievement growth targets for each subgroup of students and all of our students. So for example, all students has a target, black students have a target, students with disabilities, et cetera. If students meet those targets or exceed those targets, they receive green flags. The only student groups that can receive green star flags are economically disadvantaged students, English learners, and students with disabilities. Yellow flags indicate that the student group grew but did not meet the target. Red flags mean that the students did not grow and obviously did not meet the target. So for our elementary ELA flags, you can see that we had green flags across the board except for with our multiracial students and our students with disabilities who received a yellow flag. That was pretty similar to the state. The same was true for middle school ELA. Our English learners received a red flag there. I alluded to the closing gap scores at high school. The closing gap score overall for high schools was a thirty-four, which really brought down the overall CCRPI scores for them, which you saw on that first slide. This slide that's showing ELA data is indicative of what we saw. Students in ELA at the high school level are not progressing. And that's obviously needs to be an area of focus. The ELA measure at the high school level takes into account that eleventh-grade American Lit course only. That's important to note. And then moving on to the readiness score. This tends to be a relatively stable metric. This takes into account reading levels by students. It takes into account attendance. The attendance measure is whether students are present ninety percent or more of their enrolled days at school. It also measures beyond the core course, both participation and passing at the elementary and middle school level. So those are courses related to fine arts, CTAE courses at the middle school level, courses that expose students to things beyond the core. Then at the high school level, there are several other measures that are taken into account. For example, pathway completion. College and career readiness indicators such as our students meeting standards on AP tests, SAT tests, ACT tests, into pathway assessments. The ASVAB test is also included here as part of that. You can see that we had growth year-over-year, but modest growth. High schools did see a little bit of a slip in their data from pre-pandemic to post-pandemic levels. And then a strong data point this year was our four-year graduation rate, and that helped our high schools achieve an eighty percent-plus total graduation rate at the end of 2024. However, as you can see from this slide, our five-year rate went down from 2023 to 2024. And even our four-year rate has not recovered to where we were in 2019. This is part of our intensive monitoring of not just our seniors, but our ninth through twelfth graders. We have taken some pretty extensive measures to more closely monitor credit attainment, specifically core credit attainment for our high school students, starting in ninth grade. All right, and that brings us to the final slide of the presentation. And one other correction that I want to make, especially because Mr. Maxwell is in the audience. Clark Middle's score on your PDF reads seventy-nine point nine. There was a slight correction by the state in their data through their readiness score, which pushed their score over an eighty. And you can see the schools that were selected to highlight, these are schools that made growth both year-over-year from 2023 to 2024 and pre-pandemic to post-pandemic as well. These are also schools that are not on any of the federally identified lists as well, which Dr. Elder is about to get up and talk about. However, you can see there was significant growth at these schools, specifically year-over-year, Barnett Shoals, Whitehead Road, and Clark Middle. Huge growth at Clark Middle year-over-year from a sixty-one to an eighty. So I think these schools should be celebrated. So that concludes my portion about general CCRPI things. Does anyone have any questions about CCRPI in general before Dr. Elder talks about federally identified schools?
Ms. Davis?
You know, obviously, I do have, well, all right, I'll go. I spent a lot of time with this when it first came down, and so thank you for making it, condensing it so that I can actually maybe articulate a question about it. I do see these schools that need to be celebrated. And so the question that I have is simply this. What was the enrollment at these schools? What precipitated the changes here and not elsewhere? That's meaningful to me in terms of trying to understand the effectiveness of our approach to this. And, you know, what's magic about these schools? Because some of them made a really significant change, right? And yet we have other schools that it doesn't seem to matter what we do. They don't, they can't seem to move that needle. So what are the conditions that allow these, some schools to be more successful than others? Do we have any insight on that?
The insight that I have is that it all starts with content mastery. The schools that you see here have focused in on that specific measure, on content mastery. If you see growth in content mastery, you will see growth in student progress. You will see growth in closing the gaps especially. You will see growth in readiness. So I know it sounds, and I tell the schools this when I talk about it, but if you focus in on content mastery and you understand, I mean, I could spend an hour explaining CCRPI, and I would, I promise. But the thing is with CCRPI, we talk a lot about students on Georgia Milestones Tests who are proficient and above. CCRPI also takes into account those developing students as well. So those are students who have moved out of that beginning low category and moved into sort of that middle range of achievement. They count in this index. And so what we talk about is the bubble for students is not just students moving on to proficient. It's students moving out of that low category into that developing category as well. And there are, you know, measures I think you can take to increase content mastery that are universal. They include stronger tier-one instruction. They include, for us, I would say staying true to the resources that we've provided in ELA and math, especially at the elementary level. And they definitely include stronger results on school climate indicators. They also include stronger results on indicators such as attendance. The schools that you see here, especially if I could call out Barrow and Whitehead Elementary, also Fowler Drive, they had the strongest attendance in the whole district. Attendance really matters when it comes to content mastery because you're not going to be able to master the content if you're not in the building. I know that also sounds really simplistic. But it's true.
Our class size is a factor.
That's a good question. There, I mean, I think across the board in CCSD, we have some of the lowest class sizes that you're going to see. Especially one of the schools on that list, if you're looking at Cleveland Road, there's very, very low class sizes at Cleveland Road. But the thing is, the schools that are not on this list also had low class sizes. So I'm not sure if low class sizes is really the answer. The research on low class sizes is relatively inconclusive. So I'm not sure if that was a factor or not. Below twenty, below twenty to one.
Any other questions from the board?
I have to spend some time with it, and I'll have questions later. Thank you.
You've got a nice, long report there as well.
Yes.
Dug into that.
Thank you, Ms. Barlow.
No problem. Thank you all.
Moving on to eight C. Dr. Elder?
Good evening. I'm going to continue the conversation, but highlight our federally identified schools. I'm going to touch on what brings them to be a federally identified school, some of the action steps that we're taking to improve their content mastery and their progress, and then some successes that we have to celebrate on them as well. So the criteria for a federally identified school is it's a school that is in the lowest five percent of the state on content mastery and progress. And so we do have two elementary schools, Witt Davis and Holston Elementary, who are on what is called a comprehensive support and improvement, or CSI school. Those two schools were identified in January of 2024, and that was based on 2023 CCRPI data. We have a middle school, and that's Coil Element, Coil Middle, and they're an ATS I school. That's a targeted support and improvement school. And that means that they're, a subgroup is not performing, and they are consistently underperforming compared to the state. And so Coil is receiving supports that are specific to students with disabilities. So let's take a look at the scores that actually, or the scores that identified them. And those are highlighted in orange. Right next to that is the 2024 scores that Mr. Barlow was referencing. And as you can see, we are making progress in moving from 2023 to 2024 for these specific schools. To look a little further at each school individually, if you remember, Mr. Barlow said, it really comes down to content mastery. And if you notice, we've broken that down even further into ELA math and science. And you can see the trend in where they were and the drop that really brought them to be identified. Progress also matters, and that gives you the data there on the comparison 2019 to 2023. Holston noting that their English learners did not have enough in that subgroup to be a subgroup. But this is what brought them to the list. Witt Davis, also a comparison across years, noticed that Witt Davis was in the lowest twenty percent in the state with content mastery. But they were the lowest in the five percent in the state. And Mr. Barlow really looked at that deeply and said he truly believes that they were, if not the last, right next to the last school identified. So we hope that we're going to see them turn right back around, and we're going to be able to share that with you in just a minute. Coil Elementary, again, this is specific to students with disabilities, and this is their content mastery. They were lowest five percent in the state in both content mastery and progress. But we're going to share some positive results in that all three of our schools are moving forward. So the 2024 is highlighted in yellow, and we're going to break those down. If you look, there are positive gains across all of those areas, content mastery and progress for all three of those schools. And notable is that students with disabilities, their progress was almost thirty percent from 2023 to 2024. And so we have a long way to go. And content mastery is what's going to get us there, but we're moving in the right direction. So what are we doing? This sets to Ms. Davis's question about what's happening and how do we move it? Some success that we're seeing just this year, so student comparing the same cohort. How did I perform in August and how did I perform literally just days ago on my winter eye-ready growth? And in all three schools, we saw growth. Specifically, Holston had ten-point growth of students who are reading on or above grade level. Witt Davis was up twelve points compared to their fall data. And those same students, students with disabilities increased five point five points with disabilities increased 5.5 points from their fall data. So this is the same student is growing this year. So we were excited to see that. What we're doing is really working on the professional capacity of our teachers and our leaders. Specifically, our building leaders and our coaches are doing professional learning communities to really lead the work of data-driven instruction, especially around literacy. We are doing learning walks, which I think is extremely valuable to leaders, getting them in the schools. Dr. Scott's been very targeted about which principals she's pairing together. And so Holston is able to go and spend time with Fowler Drive and walk the classrooms of Fowler Drive so that they begin to calibrate those practices. And I think that's having a huge impact on what the expectations are and how to create those high expectations at these schools that need the most support. We also have our Georgia Department of Education support person who meets with us monthly. And then each of these schools have assigned support persons to work with the leaders and the coaches in those buildings as well. So there's a comprehensive support plan in place. Specific actions for our CSI schools is our curriculum coordinators and the implementation specialists. They're working directly with coaches and teachers inside classrooms to really model how to use the new tier one literacy resources and giving that constant feedback, that cycle of feedback. So I'm going to show you how to do the work, then I want you to try to do it, and then I'm going to give you immediate feedback on how that's going. And I do think that that's making a huge impact. The state of Georgia did offer two literacy coaches to our CSI schools, and those coaches have a wealth of experience, and they're working with the state and the school, specific to literacy. So they're only focused on K2 right now. They're on our district literacy implementation team, and they've brought a lot of knowledge and input to that team. And then, as I mentioned, we have school support. A state person is spending a full day every week in those buildings, working with the leaders and the coaches on, again, it's very focused on literacy. Coil is working with RISA to work specifically with our teachers of the students with disability on co-teaching models, specially-designed instruction, and how students with disabilities can access tier one instruction. They're doing learning walks to monitor the students with disabilities and their engagement specifically. And then we have a fantastic special education coordinator who is working intensely, I would say weekly, my guess is she's there more than that. She's always there, really working with the team leader to build their capacity and working with those teachers in their professional learning communities. Our next steps are really to continue with our Learning Wednesdays, the leader instructional rounds that I talked about briefly, I really do think is one of those high-impact pieces that we're doing. And then the intensive support from our content coordinators, math and literacy, science and social studies. And those schools are getting more support than all the rest of the schools. So they're assigned more frequently to these schools. And then our leaders, really growing their capacity to do data-driven instruction and really leading in a culture of change and how to create those high expectations. And then finally, building the capacity of special education teachers to deliver and participate in tier one instruction. That's what I have, and I welcome any questions.
Anyone have any questions, comments? Ms. Davis?
Okay, no, I don't think that quick, but so what I'm hearing is the focus on literacy.
Yes, ma'am.
Is truly driving our results.
I think so.
Okay. And so we've heard that two or three years now, right?
Two.
Two years now? Okay, good. I heard you say eye-ready.
Mm-hmm.
Are we still using eye-ready in all of our schools?
Yes, ma'am. So eye-ready is our diagnostic tool.
Yes.
We're required to give that three times a year so that you really can see growth over time with specific students.
We had a lot of pushback in previous years from teachers not liking eye-ready. What's the other one that's comparable to that?
IXL.
What was it, IM something, but I can't remember.
MAP.
MAP, right. So people were, are we still in this dual environment?
No. Actually, we are eye-ready, and I do believe it's really become a part of our assessment culture. And because we have year-over-year data, I think it's probably giving us more valid results.
Thank you. I have lots of questions, but I'll have to take time to write them down. But this is excellent. I appreciate it.
Well, we welcome your questions. Thank you for your attention.
I don't mean the performance. I mean, your presentation and the data analysis is very excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. Eldon. Thank you very much. All right. So that takes us to item number nine, which is the consent agenda as determined at the work sessions. This also includes the solar panels. I just wanted to point that out. So can I get a motion that we?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Second, okay. So Dr. Jaeger, and then, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Phone people?
Yes.
Okay. Did Dr. Anderson say yes?
I'm off start and I'll call back.
Okay. Okay, all right. Well, all right. So that has passed unanimously. Thank you. All right, we are now down to item number 10, policies for individual vote. The first one is policy GBT, professional publishing, action to approve revisions. I need a motion, please.
Can I move to approve 10A and 10B together?
I say.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. By Ms. Butts, I'm sorry.
Did you want to, did you want to swat?
Is there, Dr. Is there any discussion?
We did have discussion on this earlier.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Seeing that there's no discussion, I'll take a vote. All in favor of passing 10A and 10B, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all right. So we've got, we've got three, four, what is, how did Nicole vote?
All right, so that's four and two. Four, two, motion fair, motion fair.
By Dr. Jaeger. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Gant. Any discussion? Anyone who want to say anything?
I did notice in this agreement that cross-country is now a part of the IGA. Are those new cross-country teams, or did the existing cross-country teams become a subset of this?
Cross-country to include middle school sixth graders to participate in this program. That's what was a part of it. And if I'm not mistaken, correct me on this, this was part of it last year as well, that they were able to participate in cross-country?
It just said new on the agreement.
Okay.
Cross-country is new. It's new.
Okay, thank you.
It's new for sixth graders?
Yes.
I'm sorry. So that's at all of our middle schools or where?
All of your middle school students are able to participate.
Okay.
I apologize. All of our middle school students are able to participate in cross-country.
Any other discussion? Dr. Gant?
Yes, I was going to say I am going to support this. I do think that these are opportunities, I know it's for this upcoming, like the school year that we're in.
Yes.
But it could be helpful, I know, just to have a better idea. And I do appreciate like the breakdown with the sports, each sport, and like what is spent on each sport. But I think more conversation and just even more information with regards to how, not just how this is being used, but some of the same things we would expect from a partner, Conversations around consistency, expectations when it comes to people that are working with children, and also just outcomes. You know, if we are going to be working, you know, with, you know, partners on literacy, obviously, we may not see anything immediately, but what are we looking, you know, in addition to having increased participation, which is great, what are some other like indicators that we're going to be looking for across time, particularly if we anticipate this is going to be something that we ask the ACC government for, as well as it's going to be something that the district pours into?
Thank you, Dr. Gant. Anyone else? Ms. Butts?
So I'm in support of it, but I just have some questions. So when we look at, do we have any data to show us how effective it was last year with the students? And I know we just started it last year, but do we have any data of like how many students actually participated? The different measures that we were looking at, or we don't have?
Ms. Butts, we do have that information. We'll be glad to reshare it, but it was shared, the number of participants throughout all of the sporting activities that we had our first year as well. And if I'm not mistaken, and I think, and I'm looking at Mr. Grauner, at the initial, there was a breakdown of how much was spent for equipment for each sport as well.
Yes, sir. That's correct. I mean, we had the budget for last year, and we can get that information.
Yes.
And I think Mr. Ward and Mr. Holt shared that, I think it was a little while back, but we have the number of participants and the impact as well.
I think that was shared in a board presentation at one point, but we will reshare that again as to how much was spent for each sport, how many students participated throughout.
Okay. And the flag football, will that be offered at all four middle schools and elementary or just middle school?
This is, I'm sorry, this is elementary. I don't know why I said middle or early, but this was elementary school. You are correct.
Okay. And, okay, that's it.
Dr. Gant?
Just a quick question about clarification. The, I'm sorry, let's see, the $110,000 for the 2425 school year, this agreement is for this year and next year, right?
Yes, ma'am. The initial year that was started, '22, '23, it was $110,000. Last year, '23, '24, $110,000, and next year, '25, '26, will be $165,000. And I'm looking to my guys, I'm sorry, my team, I try to keep it here, and I'm not always right here, but I think in the agreement, that's what it states.
That is correct. And we had, in the general fund budget for this year, there's actually $265,000 for youth development, so.
Can you say that again?
There's actually roughly about $265,000 in the general fund budget for this year, but that'll be supplemented by the money from ACC Gov. Their total budget was actually $265. When we put the budget together, we weren't 100% sure we would get that continuation funding from ACC Gov. So I tried to be as conservative as possible, so we went ahead, but that'll be all set by the money from ACC Gov. So their total budget will be roughly about $265 this year. And they had, and the reason why it's higher than the, they had some funds last year that got carried over to this year that they did not spend of about $50,000. So if you add all that together, it gets you to about $265 roughly.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis?
So are these funds exclusively for YDI? And how, who has authority to spend those funds? Is it with the school districts? Is it with the, who actually has authority to spend?
It's given, and Mr. Grauner, correct me if I'm wrong, this money that was donated to us from the county government was given to, we distributed among all of the elementary schools, correct?
That is correct. It's, Ms. Davis, to answer your question, we have Chris Holtz, who's actually the youth development coordinator. He's one of our middle school teachers at Clark Middle. He kind of oversees the program in conjunction with our athletic directors, Mr. Ward and Mr. Thomas at Clark Central and Cedar Shoals. All purchases go through business services. We didn't want to put that burden on our high school bookkeepers, so we do all those purchases through. My assistant actually enters all those. We get a request from them. The budget goes through Dr. Hooker and I, that they present, and of course, we presented that in the general fund budget last year. So we, every purchase requisition goes through our office, though.
Excellent. And is YDI exclusively working with the schools? Are they working with other organizations? Because I know the last year, for the first year of the sixth grade league, they did work with CYDO. So are we now exclusively working within the school system itself? Or are we still, are there opportunities out here to partner with other youth-serving organizations?
Ms. Davis, I can share with you, and the partnership with the sixth graders last year, and we appreciate Mr. Eldon's services, the principals met, middle school principals met and said, we would like to keep the sixth graders with our middle school students in order to keep them there. That was the decision made by the middle school principals.
I have a call to motion from Ms. Hall.
Okay.
So I think I'll, I'll do that then. So we have a motion and a second to accept the IGA between CCSD and ACC Gov to use the ARPA funds for YDI. All in favor of that motion, say aye? Aye? Ms. Anderson says aye?
Okay.
Aye? Aye? Okay, five, all right. All right, nay?
Aye.
Okay, and one nay. So motion passes. All right. Moving on to job descriptions. I need a motion and a second, please, to accept the job descriptions as written.
I move that we accept the job descriptions as written.
Second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Davis? Okay.
These are the special ed. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay. Dr. Jaeger, did you want to say anything? Or, Ms. Davis, did you, you pulled it, so do you want to say anything?
I simply wanted clarification in the announcement that this is a progression, and it's a program that we've been, we've heard about before. Thanks for clarifying that for me. And that we're looking to see some professional development in the area of special ed support. So I'm excited about that.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Seeing that there's no more discussion, I'd like to call the vote. All in favor of passing the job descriptions as written, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? Any opposed? Anybody on the phone oppose? No? Okay. All right, okay. Moving on, all right. We will now go to C, which is the October 2024 financial report and approval. Mr. Grauner?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Good evening. You have before you the financials as of October 30.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Good evening. You have before you the financials as of October 31st. Keep in mind, the property taxes we're due in Clark County around October 20th, so our revenues, year-to-date, about 106.5 million. Keep in mind, property taxes are roughly about 60% of our total revenues. At this point, we've collected about 84% at the end of October, which is where we, right where we should be. The rest will kinda come in. We already saw a pretty good influx in November and then the rest of the year. So, right now, we're more than budgeted revenue because of the property taxes. It's kinda hard to predict when that will come in between October and November. So the 19.3 million over revenue will kinda level out in November. So, keeping that in mind, year-to-date, we're about 22 million. Again, that's the property taxes. Actual expenditures, we're tracking right along. For the month, we were just slightly over about 342,000. Again, those are just timing differences. Year-to-date, we're about 434,000 over. So again, just timing differences there. General fund balance, keep in mind, when you see that number, this is the largest balance we'll have at any point in time probably in this fiscal year. It's about 127.6 million. Again, it's because of the property taxes. Budgeted, we had about 105.8. Again, that's just timing differences. That fund balance will continue to trickle down as we, again, the bulk of our property taxes have been received. So our expenditures will keep exceeding our revenues now for the rest of the year. So we're tracking down to around probably 57, 58 million in fund balance. I'll be happy to answer any questions, all right?
Any questions for Mr. Grauner? Seeing how there are no questions? And I don't have any questions for you for the first time ever, so we're, we're just rolling along here today. Excellent.
Alright.
Okay. Can I, I get a motion and a second to accept the financial report? Okay, I got a, I got a, Ms. Davis has, second by Dr. Jaeger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? None oppose? Alright, passes unanimously. Alright, we are now moving on to 11D, which is the funding for the Georgia College Advisors. I need a motion and a second for that, please.
I will move to approve the expenditure for the college advisors for this year with the caveat that we have another conversation, a deeper conversation about the outcomes and how this is going to move us further along with the children. And I'm also interested in having some type of feedback about, you know, the impact of this as well.
Okay. Alright. Can I get a second on that? That's a, that's a whole lot there.
Oh, I can, I can make it succinct.
No, it's fine.
It's a conditional approval. Right.
So I have a motion and a second. Does anyone have any, any, any rather brief discussion on that?
Can we hold on one moment? I hear chatter from Mr. Pruitt as well as I hear Nicole saying something. Which two?
Well, we were just trying to figure out if this is, if this motion is conditioned on some specific action or if those were just comments and it's just a motion to approve.
You tell me, what do I have to do to make sure that we get another conversation about the outcomes and the effectiveness?
Well, you probably need more detail than another conversation.
Right. So I don't know how to get there without adding what I said to the motion.
Dr. Jaeger?
I would say I think Dr. Hooker has heard us, I think, and according to what Mumbie just texted, she's heard us. So I think, I trust, I trust that this district and board will do the right thing moving forward. I, I'm, I'm willing to retain the GCAC now, but I'd, I'd like to continue the discussion. Guesses how I'm gonna vote.
Dr. Jaeger and board members, you can be assured that you will have further details. We will work very closely with the college advising to give more updated measures as to how it's impacting our students. That will not be a problem on our end to do that, but I do believe this program has been very beneficial throughout the 12 years that it has existed here in Clark County. We can firm up the data that you're requesting. That's not a problem at all.
So a lot's been said, more than Ms. Palmer can write down. So, Ms. Davis, are you willing to remove the conditions and rely on the assurances? If not, then we need to restate the conditions so that Ms. Palmer can write them down.
I am willing to remove the conditions. And again, I'm just, so I'll go for the approval now. And I do trust that we will have more conversation about this. So I'm going to remove the condition just to make it easier to get this motion passed. But I think that there's really a need for this to be an agenda item for the discussion, whether that's a work session or whatever. But I don't want somebody to pass us back over something that they think meets our needs. I would like to have more discussion about that.
Yes, Dr. Jaeger?
And I just note that this contract that we're approving, if we consider reapproving, is only for May 31st, 2025. So it's basically six months. So if they want to renew next year, they'll have, we'll have to have that conversation again.
I think that's reasonable.
That's very reasonable. We'll be able to have a conversation before the end of the school year because I would love to bring this proposal back to the board to approve for the 25-26 school year.
Is that acceptable, Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Alright, Dr. Gant?
Yes, I plan on supporting it, but also just a note of record, I think, you know, perhaps one of our retreats or something like that in the future could be an appropriate time, even if it's not the one in, in March, perhaps summer to discuss more information. But I also wanna make note that we have a lot of partners with Clark County School District. And so what we start to expect of one, we should be doing this and having these conversations with others. And so I, and all of them provide, you know, services that they deem beneficial. So I just wanna be sure that as we're having those conversations, we take that as an opportunity to critically evaluate this program and the outcomes and the goals as well as, you know, other partnerships as well.
So noted. Thank you, Dr. Gant. Alright, I'm gonna call a question. All in favor of passing the Georgia College Advisors? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All oppose? Okay, aye. Alright, aye. Okay, passes unanimously. Wonderful. Thank you. Well done, board. Alright, now that takes us to item 11E, which is to approve the CYDO waiver of fees. Can I get a motion and a second? Dr. Gant?
Just a point of clarification, a question. Would it be permissible to have a motion for a waiver of the CYDO rental fees for this school year? So 23-24?
That'd be?
As well as 24? No, I'm sorry. Where, where, what are we in?
We're in 24-25.
24-25 as well as 25-26. And I just wanna give some, because we just approved a partnership.
Okay, but Dr. Gant, if I could get that as a motion and then we can go into discussion?
So I'm asking, is it permissible to make a motion that spans?
Absolutely.
Okay, over two years. Okay. So I make a motion that we approve waiving the fees for CYDO for this academic year as well as next academic year. So that's 24-25 and 25-26.
And just to clarify, if I may, I know Dr. Hooker's looking at me. So rental fees are already waived for all organizations of this type. What they're asking for is waiver of the reimbursement of the out-of-pockets for security and janitorial.
So may I make a change to that motion?
Sure.
I make a motion that we waive the reimbursement fees or, and out-of-pocket fees. Okay, reimbursement for the CYDO organization for this academic year, which is 24-25 and then 25-26.
Okay. Alright, so I've got a motion and a fore, do I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Butts seconds it. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes?
Question? May I ask a question? So there's no document in here. I know this was put on the agenda. Is there an amount of money, just to say out loud how much money we're talking about approximately?
13, over $13,000.
$13,000?
Yes, and?
Per year?
If I'm not mistaken, if you look in the document that I sent to you on 13, on December the 9th, I believe it was a little over $13,000, which included the custodial and the security fees, because the $14,000 for, for using the facility was waived.
Okay. Thank you.
Forty, it's, it's just for the, for the season. Right, for the season. They have 13 weekends that they have their program and that's for their season.
And so, follow-up question? Did I understand, Mr. Grauner, to say that we budgeted 265,000 for youth and we aren't spending it in this agreement?
And we, I didn't hear the last part.
And we're not spending it in the ACC agreement? We're not spending all of it? Is that what you said? I thought that's what you said.
Like our, our total, I'm sorry, Dr. Jaeger, our total budget for youth development this year was 265,000. So roughly, if you look at ACC Gov putting in 110,000, and then we matched that at 110,000, and they roughly had about 50,000 left over last year they didn't spend. So that makes up kinda their budget for this year. Now, we did put in the general fund budget the whole 265, so, I mean, without any contribution from ACC Gov, so I think that's probably the question you're getting to. So there is, you know, we weren't counting on that 110,000 in revenue in the general fund budget this year.
We were not counting on it.
That is correct. I think that answers your question.
So this forgiveness or whatever recuperation or whatever, what did you call it? Sorry. Re-something? Fits into that little bit we have kinda left over.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Anyone, anyone else have any questions, comments?
I'll second Dr. Gant's motion.
Okay, second Dr. Gant's motion.
Oh, no, you already did.
No, Ms. Davis already had, so. Or Ms. Butts did, I'm sorry. I'll, you know, I'll just go down the line, I'll get, I'll finally get it right.
Uh, Dr. Anderson was asking me to call her, so I thought I would call her because I'm on the phone. Oh, but she wants to.
Can anyone reach Dr.?
She just sent me a text.
Dr. Anderson, she has a comment to make. Okay. Is it there?
You're on. Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I took to state something that I think might be a little bit controversial, but when we make agreements or arrangements with community organizations.
We, we lost you, Dr. Anderson.
It's contingent upon us to be fair and to be egalitarian and to make sure that we are providing a safe.
Dr. Anderson, we keep losing you, ma'am.
Can you repeat what she said, Dr. Jaeger, if you heard?
No, it's, she's faded. Can you say that again? Yeah, I'm just hearing. Can you say it again?
Yeah, I just want us to be really careful to not, to not create a space where certain organizations have preferential treatment in our district over others, and I want us to be really intentional in making a space for every organization to have an opportunity
We, we lost you after.
To work with our students and having a policy and a system of procedures that make it safe for all of our organizations to do that. And I, I want us to like be really thoughtful in how we move forward with this, with this decision.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the vote on this. All in favor of passing a waiver of fees for CYDO for the school system years of 24-25 and 25-26, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All oppose?
Nay.
Nay. Okay. Alright, so there's one, one, one no.
Wait, did we get Dr. Anderson's vote?
Could you vote? Can you say it again?
Can't hear.
I'm an aye.
Aye, okay. Alright, so.
Thank you.
Alright, so six to one.
I'm an aye.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, so six to one.
Six to one.
Alright, so.
Measure passes.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright. That takes us to item number 12, which is the hearing calendar.
Yes, that's Mr. Grauner.
Mr. Grauner, yeah. Chris, if you just wanna do it from C, that's fine. I mean, we talked about it earlier, we just, we just have to formally accept it, correct?
Uh, yes. On the PDF, it has the three hearing dates, all at 6:00 PM, the 14th, the 21st, and the 28th.
Uh, these dates are different. Oh, no, sorry. Never mind.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. It's the, the three on the left, the 3rd, the 10th, and the 17th is when we run the ad in the Athens Banner-Herald.
Got it.
And then the hearing dates will be the 14th, 21st, and 28th. And then at the February 13th board meeting, approve the resolution to opt out, you know, based on how the hearings go. And then by March 1st, the resolution has to be delivered to the Secretary of State's office. Still haven't really got guidance on what that resolution has to look at, but I'm hoping by, by the first of the year, we'll have some more guidance. I, I still haven't really seen anything from the Georgia Department of Revenue, you know, what that resolution has to look like, but I'm sure there'll be some clarity. The bill actually doesn't go into effect until January 1st, 20, which is why we can't do the ads until January 3rd, because it doesn't go into effect until the 1st.
So, so we need a motion?
Yes, and just wanna remind you of this, and Mr. Pruitt had said this repeatedly, and Mr. Grauner has heard this at the conferences, we must have a quorum there. If we do not have a quorum, this is not gonna go over well with our community. So let's look at those dates very carefully to ensure that we can have a quorum, and those times will be 6:00 PM on the 14th, 21st, and 28th, if approved by this board.
Any, any questions? Okay. Alright, I need a motion that we accept these dates.
I so moved.
Ms. Davis, I need a second. Second by Dr. Jaeger. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any oppose? No, none oppose. Okay, alright, motion carries everything. Alright, moving on to SPOS monthly report.
complete. Cedar Shoals, photo, we have, the furniture's been delivered for the four classroom wings that we've updated, and will be installed over Christmas break. So, all the classroom areas, we'll get new furniture this Christmas time. The tennis courts are installed and ready to be used. The cafeteria expansion and outdoor eating area, we're hoping to turn over during the Christmas break. And again, we have furniture coming for those spaces as well. Any questions on Cedar Shoals? We'll be moving to Fine Arts, and the new ROTC, TC building will start during Christmas break as well. Clark Middle, we've paved the area that was in Phase One, is complete and striped. This week and next week, they'll be paving Phase Two portion, and we'll turn over that part of the, the parking area. The areas highlighted in green are where we're going to locate the solar panels at Clark Middle. Two are going to be in the little area outside of the cafeteria kitchen, and two of the solar panel arrays will be over the parking lot, the parking spaces, similar to what they're doing at the library. And this is a site plan showing you the sod. The playground space has been turned back over to Alps, new fencing installed. And this, the last slide is a view of the new front lobby, which we will be opening come January third. The one other project we got coming up that you approved tonight is the warehouse expansion. We've already got the pad on grade, and got our contractors lined up to start after the first of the year. Any questions?
Ms. Davis, do you have a question? Okay. All right. All right. Thank you, John. Yep. All right. Moving on to item number fourteen, Facilities Updates. Dr. Askew?
Good evening. Just a few quick updates this evening. So, some of our current projects, first and foremost, our LEDs are going in at both of the high schools. So, that's in full swing, started at the first of this month. Over at Clark Central, we're getting a new transformer in there, as well as a new electrical panel. So, that's the main focus right now. And then, over at Cedar Shoals, on the softball field, we've got to replace those poles. So, the demo and that is going on, and then the laying out for the new poles, and the running of the wiring. So, we're well on our way, and that project should be completed by the end of January. In addition to that, Lisa, can you blow it up? Yeah, there we go. In addition to that, we've also got new intercom systems going in at a few of our facilities. So, CCSD Learning Center, and that one's mostly complete. We're doing some panic buttons that we're going to add over there. Cleveland Road as well, and the wiring's complete, and they've got most of their equipment in. So, it's about ninety-five percent done. And then, Stroud will be done over the winter holiday. And then, of course, the HVAC renovation is the first phase of it that you guys approved last year in the spring. So, we're just about to finish those up. Of course, Berks is complete. Clark Central is complete, except for a little bit of work we got to finish on the cooling tower for that west wing, and that'll be done over the Christmas break. Classic City is complete. Gaines is scheduled for the Christmas break, break, excuse me. And then, Holston is complete. And then, of course, in January, John will be bringing to you guys our next round of HVAC renovations. So, we're excited about that. And then, just kind of looking at work orders, for the month of November, we had seventy-one as far as HVAC and AC. So, that's down a ton. And then, sixty-two of those were completed. So, we've got nine, and those are just waiting on parts and pieces, things that are in order. And then, total November work orders, we had five hundred and two. And our total days to completion, that went up, but that number's a little deceiving. It's five point seven five, which is the true number. But it includes some work orders from security and custodial. And lots of those have been done. That's camera stuff that we just need to go in and clean out. So, that real number's probably closer to three, but I wanted you to see the number that's in the computer. So, it's five point seven five. And that brings me to the question slide. Any questions?
Ms. Davis?
Yes. Under the new intercom installations at CCSD Learning Center, infrastructure wiring complete and installed at ninety-five percent. When, when we took occupancy, the former occupants took wiring out. Was it some other kind of wiring?
Well, the intercom that was in there wasn't fully functional, and was not fully functional for what we're doing with synergics. So, that's kind of like an upgrade to what was currently in the building. So, we've had to go through and put a new intercom in. And of course, that requires new wiring, and we're doing the panic buttons. So, it's an upgrade over there. Makes sense?
No. Because before we could occupy the building, we had to replace the wiring, right? Because the former occupant took the wiring out of that building. I remember this very specifically, because my question was, was it copper, right? Because I'm trying to figure out, why would they take the wiring when you move out of a building?
Right. But we're talking about the intercom specifically.
Specifically.
It wasn't, it wasn't working.
It wasn't a part of it at all. They didn't take that out. It was, they left that piece.
And it wasn't functional.
Life is good. Thank you. That was my only question.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Jaeger?
I have a quick question that I know the answer to, but I'd like everyone else to hear the answer to, in terms of the application for the electric bus rebates.
Yeah. So, that went in today. So, Jim got the information. So, that went in today. And the buses have been delivered, and that wasn't a part, but I'll share it with everybody. So, we've got our electric buses. There is a delay on the transformer from Georgia Power because of the hurricane. It's going to be nine months to a year until we get the transformer. But we do, or we are working on an interim solution that'll allow us to keep the buses charged, because you have to keep the batteries fresh. So, we'll have some mobile chargers. And we'll be able to do short routes. So, they won't be like out in the county, but maybe like a midday route that has to run. Maybe you got a student that's got to go from Clark Central over to the Learning Center, or something like that, or maybe from Classic City back to one of the buildings. But it'll be very limited, because we can't fully charge them. But we do have the ability to charge them enough to keep them operational.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis?
Okay. Sorry, I just keep seeing you guys, like, running around trying to figure out who's got the longest extension cord, you know, and trying to find a spot in paradise. Okay. All right. Wow. All right. Thank you, Dr. Askew. All right. Moving along to item number fifteen, early head start, head start policy council. Anyone?
Oh, that's, that's Mr. Denson, isn't it? So, he's not here. Okay. All right. Athens Community Career Academy, that's me. So, they didn't have a meeting in December. They'll be meeting again in January, and so I look forward to that. I know they have a lot of exciting and, and cool things, and they got a, they just got a big grant, if you saw in the Smore thing, the manufacturing-
If I'm not mistaken, Dr. Moore, correct me if I'm wrong, ABNB, ten thousand dollar grant that they gave to the Career Academy maybe two weeks ago. Am I correct in saying ten? Yes. Thank you.
They're just continuing to keep doing good work over there. So, we appreciate that. All right. Next is the Community Oversight Committee Report. Ms. Davis?
So, the minutes are here for us. The, the committee didn't meet again. This, we just had our meeting this week as well. I'm surprised to hear about the buses, but they were very excited about the solar panels, and I can, I can share that, that piece of information with you. They, at Clark, Clark Middle, because that's a, a forward step for us, and especially with the involvement of the students, being able to monitor progress. And so, it's really a learning experience, in addition to a great infusion of new technology. So, that much I will share with you. There was concern about the EV buses, but the buses are here now. Congratulations. So, I'm sure that that group will definitely be interested in hearing further feedback on that.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Davis. All right. Dr. Jaeger, the Sustainability Committee?
Thank you. Yes. The Sustainability Committee met this past Tuesday, on the tenth, and all of the subgroups are zeroing in on their recommendations, with the goal of sort of having rough drafts of each of the puzzle pieces put together by the first of the year. And then, the team will put together the report, hopefully, in, before March, but we're still aiming for March for sure, the March Board meeting.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
And everybody there was excited. Troy announced to the whole room that we were going to get the solar panels, if the board voted yes, which we did. So, and we also got an update on the buses as well.
Thank you, Dr. Jaeger. All right. That leads us to sixteen, which is adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
You won't do it.
Ms. Butt's a motions to adjourn, second by Ms. Davis, and we're just going to go. All right. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.